All right, we are returning from executive session. If you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, for consent agenda, we were supposed to have the minutes for September 26th, but I believe Michelle said those were not quite ready yet. For communications, we can go right into our student representative report, and we have three of our student representatives here with us.
For this week, we have that seniors are allowed to start painting their parking spots for the year. On October 15th, we can paint them from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And students were supposed to have their designs approved by today. And they can also prime their spots or do a base coat tomorrow if they wish. Senior sunset is later that day, from 5:30 to 7:30. There will be food and games and ice cream from Mad Maggie's. Seniors have started to turn in their transcript release forms with some deadlines quickly approaching. Some students have deadlines as early as next week. Freshman elections were Wednesday, the 9th, and it went very smoothly. There were only four candidates, so they used their speeches as more of an introduction. And then the French Honor Society is running an after-school program to teach children French. The first session was on Tuesday, and the program is called Inspire. And the majority of sports have held their senior nights.
Homecoming next Friday on October 18th. Today, tomorrow is our last day to get tickets. So at Homecoming, Student Council is hosting a Shirley Temple fundraiser. And another fundraiser Student Council is doing is we're taping our Assistant Principal, Mr. Young, to the wall.
When exactly is that?
That is next Wednesday.
What does it entail?
So, we're doing a thing where you can buy a piece of tape at lunch for $1. And we're gonna, I think we're writing your name on the tape. And we're gonna put every piece of tape on them. And yeah, after school on Wednesday.
Can you please take pictures?
Oh, yes, of course. Check out the Student Council Instagram.
How long does he have to stay there for?
Till we cut him down. He's standing on a chair, and we're taping him.
And then you're gonna move the chair?
Yes.
You will have a mat underneath?
Hopefully, he stays.
I don't think he'll be up very high, but...
Yeah, let me make sure there's no sprained ankles. Yeah, please take pictures, please.
Oh, yeah, there will be posted pictures. On a different note, German Club is hosting a non-alcoholic Oktoberfest at the high school. On October 23rd at 6:00 p.m., it's gonna just bring like the cultural ideas of Oktoberfest in there. It's gonna have a bunch of fun games. And for elementary schools, the Franklin Fall Festival was on October 5th. Franklin Family Fun Night was the 16th. And Sergeant Fund, Sergeant School fundraiser, fun run is next Thursday, the 17th.
And I'll start with college visits. So those are still going on. We talked a little bit about them last time. And I actually got to attend one of them myself, and they were a really nice experience. I thought it was a great way to connect with whoever's coming from the college. And I even had an instance where someone saw their interviewer. So like the person that came was the interviewer, and I thought it was a really good way to also show interest, because you know, maybe that's gonna happen to you if anyone's watching. And then also, we talked a little bit with other students about the cafeteria renovations. Right, so the response was largely good. Everyone was liking the idea of having the varied seating and getting the cafeteria renovated. There were a few kids concerned with debt because of the issues. And I just, like, whenever we do announce that, I think it might be helpful to just like say, "We can't actually do this, like, this isn't affecting anything."
Do you remember why?
Do I remember why? It's because we can only use that money for cafeteria related.
Money that comes in through that revolving account can only be used for that stuff.
Right.
So it's separate from our other stuff.
Yeah, but the, some other kids like don't know that, so I don't wanna stress them out or anything.
No, I hear that, but you have the power to do that too.
Yeah, I've told them for sure.
Good.
Okay. And then, and then we have our spirit days, right? So tomorrow is the first day of Spirit Week, even though next week is an actual week. But tomorrow, we have surfers versus bikers. Tuesday, we have pajama day. Wednesday is Adam Sandler versus the Royal Family. And Thursday...
Who thinks this stuff up?
I thought of, I thought of the Royal Family part.
That's good, I like that, it's good.
So yeah, Wednesday is Adam Sandler versus the Royal Family. Thursday's meme day, so that should be an easy one. And Friday is class colors. So juniors are red, seniors are black and gold.
No, black.
They're not doing gold? Okay, seniors are black. Freshmen are gray and sophomores are white. And then many juniors and seniors took SAT on Saturday. And students should try to get registered for their AP exam soon. Get that dealt with and all that.
Wonderful, thank you. Any comments, questions?
Did you just, you just kinda went over it really quickly. I think you mentioned the PSATs on Saturday?
That SAT, that October SAT was this past Saturday.
Right, and PSATs are coming up October 26th.
I have a question for you. I was at a recent conference, and they put up our mascot, the knight. And one of the questions that was asked is, "Why are we called the Knights?" I don't know the answer to that, so if you do, I'd love to know it. And if you don't, I'd love for you to see if you can tell me, and then maybe the next time.
I will research that. I am also not aware of why.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are gonna move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Oh, sorry, Madam Chair, I have a question. What's a Shirley Temple knight?
So, at Homecoming, Student Council, this is our second year of doing it. We are selling Shirley Temples for, I believe, a couple of dollars, $2 or $3.
Oh, the drinks? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was, okay, I get it, I'm sorry. That's where my head went, yes. You're selling the drinks. I'm thinking about the old movies, never mind. Thank you.
Will there be Gori Rogers?
No.
Likes Coca-Cola with their...
And grenadine.
Okay, going on to our recognition and communications. Do we have Superintendent Recognitions?
Yeah, I'd like to just take a minute to recognize our students and our staffs, who unfortunately have responded recently to a few emergency events. And we know that sometimes we have emergencies that happen in school, where someone might become hurt or become ill. We've had a couple of situations where maybe, where that has happened to both students and adults. And our students and our staff have responded beautifully. From students who are CPR trained, going right into action, to staff members swiftly moving other students out of the way, caring for each other. And it really just sort of recognizes and to me embodies the raised values of our district. And it's unfortunate we've had a few emergencies, but really pleased in the way that people have responded to them.
All right, our roundtable reports. This is an opportunity for any of the committee members, any of the other central office, to share any school events or community events that they wanna comment about, maybe that they've attended.
Yes, I have one. So the NAA, North Andover Athletic Association Nights on the Run is coming up very soon. It's next Saturday, the 19th. It's not too late to register. You can actually register right up to the morning of, although we encourage advanced registration, so you can get your goody bag, you know, that'll run much more smoothly. You can walk the course if you don't wanna run it. There's a lot of raffle prizes. I mean, there's like a raffle prize for every other, practically for every other entrant. So we're really trying to encourage participation. In the past, we've had great participation from the elementary schools. Thompson is far and away the team to beat. They seem to win every year. My colleague over at Merrimack College, the track coach, Mark, is gonna run the kids' fun run at 9 o'clock. And he is very inspiring, very entertaining guy. So I really, really wanna encourage anybody out there that's even thinking about it. I know that a lot of the athletes, a lot of the fall athletes are running if they don't have a game that day. But I've even seen, I'm happy to report, I've seen even the spring teams participating in a pretty big way. So kudos to the A.D. and all of his coaches for getting their involvement. So please, 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 sign up and do that. October 19th, Nights on the Run, thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, I just wanna thank the Stevens Memorial Library. On the 7th, they had their monthly teen rainbow club. I was really, really jealous of this. I wanted to go to the library and read books and do crafts with people like me. I think I might just do that, but, or have it at my house. But thank you to them for creating such a safe space for our community. And I hope it was a success, and we get to see more and more of those events in the months to come.
All right, I have a couple. You have the North Andover Parents Advisory Resource Network. They're hosting on October 23rd a free virtual event, Understanding Addiction, with Anthony Sidiri. It's virtual, that is on our website. It's also on the Parent Resource Network website. And then, starting this month, I'm going to be hosting office hours. It's just an opportunity for me to hear from the community, families, students, educators. I have one in-person on October 28th, which is during the day, from 11:00 to 11:30. And then one on November 4th, which is virtual, 6:00 to 7:30. And again, that's out on the website. It's very informal, these are not one-to-one times. I'm just looking for what people think is great about our district, some areas of strengths, and also areas that you might like to see us focus on a little bit.
Thank you. All right, any other upcoming events?
I think most of them were mentioned. Franklin has a family fun night on October 16th. Thompson has a fall festival and a trunk or treat on October 19th. Atkinson is doing trunk or treat on October 25th. Sergeant has a fun run on October 17th. You can practice Sergeant Sharks for the 19th race, for the race on October 19th. Maybe you can take over the title from Thompson School this year, just putting the challenge out there. And October 29th, Sergeant is hosting trunk or treat. AB ECC is doing a Halloween book character dress-up day on 10/31.
A lot going on.
Lot going on.
And Madam Chair, one more point on the PSATs. And a lot of people are sort of starting to shy away from taking these tests, because a lot of schools, colleges are no longer requiring them. But as a person who's employed by a college, I can tell you that it's still a good idea to take those tests. And if you do well, you submit them. They can't hurt, and they may very well help. So that's my commercial for taking the PSAT on. I don't get any benefit from it personally, just saying I think it's a good idea for students to consider it. Just once it's gone, it's gone, right?
All right, thank you. We have on here a school committee, community chats. We have to work on scheduling our next one. So we'll work on getting that scheduled and get that out, so that the community has an opportunity to sit with a couple of committee members and chat about concerns or things that are important to them in the district. All right, our Superintendent Central Office updates.
Okay, here we go. Great, so I just put on the front page today, I noticed that NAMS has done a lot of team building off, they've had a lot of team building opportunities at our middle school. There was a canoeing trip, thing for 7th graders, kayak and paddleboard for our 6th graders. Our 8th graders participated in the ropes course. And we all know that academics is really important, but equally important is the ability to form teams, to form relationships. Our staff goes on these events with the students, and it's really a time for them to bond together. And I think it looks like they're having a great time, so I wanted to share a little bit about NAMS. And then just some of the things that have been going on, some of the things were mentioned. Since the last time we were here, I was able to attend the pep rally at the Franklin School. They bring in the North Andover High School athletes. It was really, I mean, it's wonderful, there's tons of energy. Mr. Clark has, you know, he just sort of brings the house down, and his kids are full of spirit. But I was extremely impressed with the North Andover High School athletes that came. And the questions that the Franklin School students asked. What does it take to be an athlete? You know, did you always know you wanted to do this? How can you balance being an athlete or being part of a club and your academics? And time and time again, the answers sort of went back to, "I lean into my raised values." Raise really taught me a lot of things, and how good sportsmanship. It's not always about winning. Sometimes it's about, you know, giving other people an opportunity to participate or being, even when you do lose, you still take some value from that. It helps bond you as a team. And they talked a lot about that. It is hard to have to balance your academics, but if it's important, you continue to do it. So just kudos to the North Andover High School and for the things that they shared, but really for the really great questions that the Franklin students asked. Last Saturday, I was able to attend the New England Scholastic Band Competition. I'm gonna give a shout-out to Kim Hurst and the Music Association. They worked so hard to put that together. It was wonderful to see the bands there from many of, you know, surrounding towns. I had an opportunity right before we gave the awards. They asked me to speak a little bit and just to share a few words. And what I said to them was, having been a student, a band student, and having been the drum major in my school, most people may not think this, but I was a particularly shy child, and I didn't really necessarily have a lot of friends. And I said to them that lots of the things I learned from being in the band are the things that I carry with me, and it's really what propelled me and helped me to get, sort of have the jobs that I have. And I think it's important, because sometimes not all kids, sometimes the band doesn't always get the props that I think the band should get. So I wanted to tell them that, you know, "You turn out cool too," sort of. But I think they are pretty cool. It was really wonderful. We had, also, we had a meeting with the North Andover Police Department and North Andover Fire Department to talk about school safety. So they met with us, talked about, we just sort of review our safety practices. We've reviewed some of the incidents that we may have had in the district, sort of what the responses are to that. We have some new radios in our schools that allow our, all of our schools to have direct communication with police and fire. So we are rolling out those radios. But we do have meetings, and I wanted the public to know that we meet regularly with the Fire Department and the Police Department. I think I've mentioned this before, I meet regularly with the town manager. We have a scheduled meeting, so we sort of come together. We talk about things that might pertain to school in town. Sometimes I have questions, sometimes she has questions. But it's really just a time for us to brainstorm together and share ideas, and it's been very helpful. I also attended the Thompson School Raise Assembly. The, our 4th grade team was in charge this time. I think it's Ms. Monroe, Ms. Tybert, Mrs. Waldron, and the 4th grade students. And it was all about inclusion, and they did a great job. They had some little vignettes, and they really picked real-life situations that had happened to them. So one of them was about being outside at recess and not being included in recess. And so they sort of showed what happened, and then they showed ways that you could be inclusive. It was beautiful. And the kids were really wonderful, very attentive. And what I really particularly enjoyed was that the staff was right there with their students, sitting and participating, and being very active in the assembly, so it was great.
Did you wanna talk about principal learning arc?
Oh, so sorry, I skipped that one, thank you. We had our principal learning arc, so if you remember, that's really when we have a time to work on professional development with our principals. We have sort of three goals that were set, they set this year. In the fall, we're talking about the Y for HQIM, Why All The Time. In the winter, we're talking about, how should this look? What does strong instruction look like? And then in the spring of this year, we're gonna be talking about, what do we do next? How do we use data to enhance our MTSS system? This time, we also talked about MCAS. We did a data analysis protocol with the principals, which gave them an opportunity to collaborate, to analyze the data, and to look for individual observations about the data. And then we're sort of report out what they see. And then, this was just our first glance at MCAS. You'll be receiving a more comprehensive overview. But the principals brought that back to their school, and they'll be doing some of those observations with their staff as well. Thank you, pointing that out.
Superintendent Letherp, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a full-on MCAS.
I believe it's November 21st, is that correct? Yeah, November 21st.
We'll have a full-on presentation where you tell us all the things that we need to know about it.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. I went to the Franklin School Fall Fest. That's a picture of some of the parents doing something, like a craft with the kids. It was really, well, it was great, it was fun. They had outside activities. I think probably it looks like the youth center was maybe there, or some of the high school students supporting our students. This Monday, we had our operational meeting. At the operational meeting, things that we cover as we review the budget. So this is an opportunity for me to talk with the principals about where we are in the budget, review some of our spending. We started to think and talk a little bit more about substitute budgeting. We review procedures. This time, we talked a lot about the review of our safety procedures. Unfortunately, we have seen students use threatening language this year. And we talked about the protocol for when threatening language is reported, and the process that we'll be using for that. I'm gonna write about it a little bit in nightly news in my article this time. Really talking so families understand what the protocol is when threatening language is used. But also, we need the community to help us. I think that unfortunately, it has become sometimes commonplace, when you're mad at something, to use a threatening statement. And unfortunately, young ears hear those statements. And when they're either pressed against the wall, or fearing fearful, or having a concern, sometimes they come out. But there are big ramifications for using threatening language in school, so we reviewed that. ECLC is a, the Essex County Learning Community in Power of Place. Last year, we applied to be accepted to this professional development cohort. It's all part of Essex Community, and we were accepted. And what this allows us to do is, it gives us wonderful professional development for our staff. One of the courses that many of our special education teachers will be attending that's free to us is reviewing the new IEP process with Alan Bloom. So this is, it's really great to be part of this community. They offer mini-grants, so we put that out to our teaching community, where about up to $2,000, I think it was, where any staff member could write a mini-grant for something that they might be wanting to do. They work with us if they're, we're looking to do some professional development within our community. They have some resources that they can provide to us. We have a core team. It's myself, Kristin Ando, Dr. Goddard, who's the principal at AB ECC, Michelle O'Leary, who is our SEL Director, Deb Holman, our principal at North Andover High School, and Carolyn Beasley, our Assistant Principal at North Andover Middle School. We're the core team. We meet with all the other communities in Essex County. We'll meet with them for two years. We're working on a problem of practice. We'll have a coach that will work with us, that will come to our district about nine times over the time. We are in the developing stage of what our problem of practice is, but we sort of believe that we're, we're working around, wondering about the disparities in engagement and achievement that we're seeing, in particular with students who identify as Hispanic or Latinx. And things that we'll be looking at are data, our achievement, enrollment in courses, parent participation, discipline, and that right. Yesterday, I got to do Kittredge Safe Roots to School. So if you were at the Common, we, Kittredge students met at the Common. Officer Wilson and Officer Scarlett came, and we walked to school together. We had a nice crowd. It was a beautiful day for that, it was great. Yesterday, also, Tracy, somebody saved, Michaela? Tracy, I'm gonna get that right. Tracy Michaela and I participated in the Chapter 70 training with Mark Abrams from the Abrams Group, and that was great for us. And then today, a part of the MOA, we signed with the town, but also just good practice. We had our budget review meeting with the town to be able to look at where we think our budget is, where the town thinks our budget is, and problem solve together. Sorry, a little long-winded.
All right.
So I noticed, so speaking of the budget, there's no budget update?
There is no budget update. I did speak with the chair, and because it's, we don't, it's challenged, when we don't have a pay cycle, the budget doesn't really necessarily change much. So we're gonna move towards presenting the budget, what, probably every other time, or projecting in the beginning of the month, when we have bills that have come in. And I think I shared with you last time, it really is challenging, probably around November's, and we'll have a better sense of what bills are looking like and projecting out. So it's status quo right now from last time.
And status quo, just as a reminder, we're still projecting a significant deficit.
We're still projecting a significant deficit.
So we're, we're using every, we've used more dollars, projecting that we use more dollars than we have.
Correct.
We're still dealing with that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, I'm getting a message right now that the Northern Lights are pretty amazing outside right now. So if you have, you're listening, and if you're students, are at home, it might be pretty nice for them to go outside and to take a look. All right.
We should have to take pictures with your phone to actually see them, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
With your phone, you can see them, yeah.
Most, most modern phone cameras are sensitive.
Thank you, Julia.
All right. So we have some proposed school committee dates for the second half of the year. So December through June. Looks like December 16th would be our tri-board meeting. January 9th would be our budget presentation. Then we'd go into that following meeting with our public hearing, and then vote on our budget January 30th. So if everybody wants to take a look at those dates, there should be right under that a calendar of major holidays. See if there are any conflicts with any of those dates.
I'm seeing most of these dates, someone's already put them up against the school calendar, so we never know.
And Madam Chair, we put Thursday, June 5th, and then both Thursday, June 12th and the 18th. Were we thinking one or the other, correct? Or are we gonna hold both right now?
I believe we should hold both right now, in the event that we need to have it. That 18th, we may, we can cancel if we don't need it, but I think we're gonna leave it on the calendar in the event that we do need it.
Sorry.
The 18th, June 18th.
Oh, June 18th?
June 18th, sorry.
I thought you were talking about December.
And part of that is because of the end of school and things that come up?
Correct. And that, when, well, June, that Thursday, June 19th is a holiday, so we moved it up the date before.
I see, that's why it's Wednesday.
Correct.
Yep. I happen to know that I'll be out of town on, oh, lights?
Are you getting pictures?
Yeah. Out of town on January 16th. However, since it's a public hearing, we'll probably have remote participation. I'll need to be remote that day. Oh, that's right.
We don't have remote participation.
All right, but I can, can I participate?
You can come in remotely.
Yeah, okay.
January 16th, I will be remote as well. I'm on vac, well, actually, no, I won't be able to attend. I'm on, no, I won't be able to attend on January 16th. I cannot attend.
I will be able to attend, but it'll have to be remote.
Okay.
So maybe, well. Just for planning purposes, yeah.
All right, I'll note that. We'll see if maybe you can get me dates. We may, I don't know if we can adjust the public hearing as much, because it's in the budget.
We might be able to. We can talk with town manager about that.
See if we can make any arrangements to switch it around. So I'll note on that one, see if we can make any changes to that.
I will be unable to attend on the 6th of March.
The 6th of March. And of course, I will be gone May 22nd. Okay. So we'll have a few little, but as long as we have a quorum, we should be fine.
And just to know, Madam Chair, the Thursday, the 30th of January, the school committee vote on the budget is really a, is a really important date, because the budget then goes to the Select Board and Finance Committee. They vote on that, or it's presented to them on the 10th.
Correct. So we have to hold firm to that date.
Yes.
To make it...
That's the January 30th.
January 30th. Yeah, and we do have the budget calendar in there.
Madam Chair, one other thing. The December 16th is a Monday. So is the, is the meeting Monday, the 16th, or is it Wednesday, the 18th?
Sure question. Budget calendar that you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a Monday. So we'll have to check with, let's see, if it's on here. And they have it as, it must be on the Monday, then. They have it on December 16th that it's the tri-board meeting.
So it's probably that Monday.
It's probably a Monday. The Select Board has a meeting on the town calendar, maybe.
What's that?
The Select Board has a me, has it on the, on the town calendar.
So it probably is Monday.
It's probably.
We should verify that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, we wanted to look at dates for possibilities for our retreat. Normally, the school committee has their retreat in the summer. But because we were dealing with the budget throughout the summer, we canceled our retreat so that we could work to get things in order. We'd like to get that back on the calendar. It's a time for us to be able to do some training. It's a time for us to be able to do some training. So we sent out a survey, and it looks like everybody is available on the 14th at 5:00. So it looks like we'll schedule it for November 14th, starting at 5:00 PM. That'll be our retreat.
And Madam Chair, just for the public to know, a retreat is still an open session of the school committee, but it's not a broadcast one.
Correct.
And it's a working session.
Yes. Madam Chair, so just one, I noticed, we just went by the calendar with the dates that matter that are here, and we talked about it in relation to our meeting calendar, but I also, I wanted just to recognize that I've seen in action where teachers have used this and said, no homework on these days, where that hasn't happened before, so it was just, I saw that happen, and it was fantastic. My daughter came home with knowledge about something she didn't have before, and there was, you know, no homework, any homework on that day. So it was a great, to see it in action and working.
Great. It's nice to hear.
Just a quick update on the superintendent search. We did opt to do that RFP. It is a little bit more extensive than doing a simple scope, so that's taking some time to put together with the town. We have a portion that the school district has to work on, so we're putting that together and getting that back to the town to be able to put out. So it's going to put our timeline off a little bit.
Enough to be concerned about, or?
No.
No, okay.
All right. We have some NADA Level 3 grievances that we can hear, so what I'm going to ask is, if our student representatives, can we scoot to the side by ed?
Take your name tags.
Take your name tags.
They're nice, they're colorful.
I do like.
Flower, yeah. See, I like it. You like the sharks.
And what I'd like to do is have them, let's take them one at a time. So we'll do the first one, have them present the grievance. I know this was first heard by Ms. Lathrop, so, and I think her position was put in there, like to hear her position as well, any rebuttal from this side, from the, from NADA, and then we'll have a committee discussion.
And Madam Chair, it's important to note that per the teacher's contract, if there's a dispute over contract language, this is the approved process that both sides have agreed to, to use to resolve the grievances.
That is correct. So this is the third level for the grievance, that they come before the school committee to bring it to us for a determination at this level.
Did it stop working? Did it stop?
It stopped. It's all right. I'm fine.
So I'm going to ask the committee to just hold any questions until, until after we've heard it, heard both sides and the rebuttal before we go into discussion.
So, typical. My name's, good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin Tierney. I'm the field representative organizer for the Mass Teachers Association. I work with the North Andover Teachers Association. My experience typically with a Level 3 is the committees generally move into executive session for consideration of grievance matters.
So my understanding is, there's very, under the law, there's limited reasons of why we can go into executive session, and this is not, does not fall under one of those reasons of which we can go into executive session.
I don't know if I've ever had a Level 3 in open session. We're dealing with the contract and the CBA, and so it does, you know, affect collective bargaining in that sense, because we're talking about contract interpretation, and we have a dispute over the interpretation of the CBA. So generally, we're in an executive session. I've never been in an open session for a Level 3. I don't know if the union objects, but.
Yeah, we are particularly sensitive to making sure that we are following open meeting law and make sure that we only ever go into executive session with a, according to one of the approved reasons. And although in executive session, we can discuss strategy regarding union negotiations, there's nothing here, and we can browse your copy with it, that says we can, that this is, that would be appropriate at this time. And that's just from the list of approved reasons from the state why we can go into an open, go into executive session.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have an objection tonight, and maybe it's a follow-up conversation we can have in the future, just sometimes the nature of grievances deal with, you know, specific personnel matters and issues that would be inappropriate to address in the public. So I think our grievances tonight.
Could fall under one of those if it was personnel-related, I believe.
Gotcha, yeah. So I think our grievances tonight are broad and, you know, dealing with the entire bargaining units that we're, we're representing, but, so, just want to make that note. So this is the first time doing this in front of, in front of a full audience. So again, thank you for hearing us tonight. Is there a way I can plug into those screens at all?
I'm sure we can.
Just unplug from Kristin.
Yep, right here.
Right here.
Perfect. I knew there'd be something. Okay. See if that works. There it go. What happened?
The web wasn't the same without you.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
It doesn't like you.
Let me try to remedy that.
No FBI.
Don't worry about that.
That might be my favorite. Network name.
All right. So thank you for hearing us again. I'm Kevin Tierney. I'm the field rep working with NADA. I'm joined tonight by other members of the Executive Board of Officers, including the grievance chair Denise Coleman. We have two Level 3s to discuss tonight. One pertains to a course approval interpretation in the contract that I'm going to talk about, and the other has to do with a pay issue over the contract interpretation for the teaching assistant unit. So I'll begin with our first Level 3, which has to do with the approval of courses for continued education. So NADA's contracts, like most teacher contracts around the state includes language that allows for course reimbursement related to continued education for educators. So taking graduate-level courses, there's a lot of research to show the benefits of educators continuing to educate themselves in the hopes of improving how they educate the students. Lots of good education happening. And unsurprisingly, the teacher's collective bargaining agreement includes language to incentivize continued education. Article 20, Section D, has language which states that teachers may complete college and university-level courses and/or graduate programs to advance on the salary schedule. So by completing those courses, they can move over in their step scale on columns, which indicate various levels of education attained. Article 20 also states that course approval and advancement is based on the criteria that the course is aligned with system-wide goals, and that it's appropriate for the teaching assignment, so that, you know, history teachers aren't taking, you know, yoga classes, yeah. Maybe the history of yoga classes, I'm sure there's something there, but, but that the coursework is relevant, and as the CBA states, it's aligned with district goals, which really means it's going to be aligned with the goals those individual educators have with their students in their subject area. So in the past, lots of teachers nowadays, and I'm sure many folks in this room have this experience, we all had this experience for a little while, even in K-12 setting a few years ago during COVID, but at the graduate level, it has been well-established and commonplace now to have online or hybrid coursework. Lots of folks are taking really rigorous coursework through hybrid or even entirely online programs, and they're offered from various universities all over the country, accredited institutions. I was enrolled for a while in a doctoral program in education from UMass Lowell, which was, you know, 90% online, and then one week in the summer, I would be in person. Lots of teachers have that experience as well. In North Andover, there were lots of folks who found useful and relevant coursework through Idaho State University in the Albion Center for Professional Development, and they began to be denied approval for lane advancement with those courses. So part of the process is you apply for the course, the administration approves whether or not this course would be accepted for lane advancement, and these courses began to start getting denied for folks. Idaho State University is an accredited institution, the Albion Center for Professional Development is also well-established, provides all sorts of professional development and graduate-level coursework, and the timeline of this dates back to 2023, when in August of '23, those courses began to be denied by the administration. Shortly thereafter, a formal letter from the union president, Julia Darman, requesting to bargain over the matter because the union's position was this was a change in working conditions. Up until this point, the union was, had no issue because these courses were being approved. There was contract bargaining, which happened, was happening, which successfully concluded that November, and after several meetings, negotiation meetings, an MOA was signed by Juliette, the president and superintendent at the time, in February of this year. And this issue was resolved outside of the main negotiation with this MOA, which resulted in members being able to take one course from these programs, Idaho State or the Albion So again, the union's position was that this was a change to well-established working conditions and past practice, and the MOA was a compromise which reflected an acceptable agreement to kind of meet the district halfway. The district felt that these courses didn't meet the criteria they wanted necessarily. The union obviously felt differently, and so the agreement was one course per year from this Idaho State University program. So this grievance, you know, was again, this year, they began to be denied. My understanding is that MOA expired. It was a one-year agreement, so that MOA, or expired at the end of last school year. So now, without that MOA, we're, we're back to the main CBA language, and we're back to this dispute over the interpretation of that language in Article 20. So our remedy that we're seeking, the resolution that we think makes good sense, is to go back to the agreement we had already reached, the parties had already come to with the one course per year from Idaho State University and the Albion Center for Professional Development. We think it's kind of meeting in the middle from what we feel is a past practice that allowed members to utilize this without restriction in the past. We feel it's acceptable to come to an understanding that we had already reached before, where one per year is acceptable. So that's the nature of the grievance, that's where we're coming from, that's the remedy we are seeking on the first one.
May I hear your position? Okay. I'd just like to point out a couple of things. So Article 10, Article 20 was mentioned in specific D2. It said, "Teachers may complete college and university-level courses and/or graduate programs to advance on the teacher's salary schedule." That line also says, "The superintendent and their designee must pre-approve courses and programs in order to be eligible for advancement." Also, D3 was talked about, that says, "Course approval and advancement is based on the criteria that the course is aligned with system-wide goals and that it's appropriate for the teaching assignment." That item also says, "It's the superintendent or their designees, if the superintendent or their designee rejects a course because it does not fit the criteria, the teacher will be notified that his or her course was not approved." I also want to mention in D, and every D, there's another one, a four, that says, "Graduate credit from degree-granting institutes, as well as North Andover in-service credit approved by the superintendent, their designee will be recognized for advancement on the teacher's salary schedule." During the Level 2 grievance, this was, it was determined that there was no violation of collective bargaining agreements, specifically Article 20, Section D, that said, "Teachers may complete college and university-level courses and/or graduate programs to advance on the teacher's salary schedule." The Albion Center for Professional Development at Idaho State University does not offer university-level courses. All the offerings at the Albion Center for Professional Development are professional development courses. Brick Bollinger, the Director of Graduate Studies at Idaho State University, confirmed on August 26, '24, that the offerings are not college or university-level courses. Their purpose is to fulfill professional development requirements for recertification. The courses are not the same rigor as a graduate-level course, and they would not be accepted at Idaho State University or any other college or university. In addition, the transcripts, transcripts from Albion Center, and I think you had mentioned you had one attached, are marked as professional development academic transcripts. That was the reason why it was denied. Just to share a little bit more information, the Albion, courses at the Albion Center are $55 a credit. You do not have to be admitted to take these professional development courses. They have a limit of 30 credits per semester. On the professional development site, sent, website, they make a very important note. They say, "Important, it's your responsibility to ensure that our courses will be accepted by your state or your district for recertification renewal or salary advancement. We do not offer refunds, and this policy must be acknowledged when you register." On the course, it also says, "This is a self-paced asynchronous, no live meetings course. Throughout this PD course, you will find it helpful to take notes along the way to assist with the quizzes. With each module, you will find reflection assessments that are not graded but will help you on your journey." So the only thing that you need, requirement to pass the course, is there's a quiz. Each quiz must be passed at 80% or higher, but you can take the quiz as many times as you need to, to pass the test. It's clear that they're all professional development courses. They say they are non-degree. Idaho State website says these courses do not count for, towards a degree. Again, they reference them as professional development courses. I'd like to just point out that we have some educators who have moved from Masters to Masters plus 75 by taking exclusively only Idaho State courses. We also have educators who have taken eight graduate courses during one semester. That's eight graduate courses. For those of us who have been to graduate school and taken graduate courses, I just want to talk about the rigor of a graduate course, taking eight graduate courses and working a full-time job and any other responsibilities they have, which leads me to believe that the rigor of these courses are not what one would expect from a graduate-level course. There, these are, there are no professor, there's no opportunity to engage with a professor during these courses. A graduate-level course, in my mind, is something that is an advancement in an academic course. the rigor of these courses are not what one would expect from a graduate-level course. There, these are, there are no professor, there is no opportunity to engage with a professor during these courses. A graduate-level course, in my mind, is something that is an advancement in an academic course. The courses are part of a graduate study typically, part of a master's or doctoral program. They're usually rigorous and in-depth. They usually include things, graduate courses often require a higher level of critical skills, analysis, research, they may include seminars, projects, thesis, work, or independent study. It's really to build upon your field or your discipline and expectations. None of these, these are professional development courses. I'm not disputing asynchronous learning, nor am I disputing online. I don't believe these are to the benefit of our students. They don't have the rigor. If you look at our strategic plan, and we're asking our students to be engaging and continuous in regular curriculum, these courses do not. And I think that some, you know, names like Let's Get Appy, looking at apps, not that they're not great for professional development, but certainly not what I would consider rigor of a graduate-level course. I did take one myself. I did not watch any of the videos. I took the quiz, I got a ninety-eight percent. I took it in a half an hour.
Do you have any follow-up? Yes.
So we do have the key from the Idaho State University that talks about the graduate-level courses, as well as emails from Albion Center talking about how their courses are routinely audited and are created by educators of higher education. The courses are also found in the Idaho State University Graduate Course Catalog. It also states that the professional development term is applied into graduate-level credits that educators seek for certification and salary advancement, and we have that as well from Idaho State, that they, you know, I, yes, Getting Appy maybe not appropriate, but some of the courses that I know our teachers have taken, one, for example, engaging students with technology during lessons, I think is completely applicable, and that was one that was recently approved under the MOA that was signed last year and completed.
Did you want to add anything, Julia?
Actually, you said a lot of things in what you said, and I think there are a lot of points...
We're the ones here, I guess.
Okay.
So we can give you copies of the documentation we have, and for you guys to weigh and balance the arguments and make your consideration of some of the coursework here. I mean, some of the courses the superintendent was referencing, I'm sure, can be balanced with a lot more of the traditional coursework that's provided, and some of the statements from Idaho State University regarding these courses. So I think we can probably move on to the TA pay.
Do we have?
Yeah, let's have some, if we could have some follow-up questions, please? Go ahead.
I guess, what's the, I mean, I just would like to get our understanding of what the purpose of taking university-level courses is for a teacher. I don't know if that's a dispute, but what's the reasoning why we want to do that? What's the purpose of taking a course to become more educated? What else?
Sure. So I think something educators in North Andover probably espouse with students and probably a goal of the committee and North Andover Public Schools, right, is to develop and create lifelong learners. Obviously, our educators should be models for that, but more specifically and practically, continuing education as an educator allows you to continue and develop your craft and skills, knowledge base, content knowledge base, pedagogy, how you're engaging in instruction. And as I'm sure the committee is well aware, as everybody who's in, in the education business is, public education and the, the charge and the duty of the school system is increasingly evolving and becoming more and more complex each year. And so both through the professional development that's provided in the district, which is, yes, part of the licensure system in Massachusetts that was set up in the 1993 Ed Reform Act, was always meant to coincide with the incentives that go way back into teacher contracts, into the first teacher contracts in the sixties and seventies, which already established, I mean, if you go back to the, you know, nineteen seventy-two North Andover Teachers' Association Contract, you will see different columns of pay associated with different levels of education experience, so...
More education means higher level of pay.
It, it, the incentive the district provides for people to continue their education is higher level of pay.
But where, so what are the columns labeled then as?
They're associated with degrees and credits in addition to those degrees.
So it's bachelors, masters, masters fifteen, masters thirty, PhD.
Correct. And there's a lot of, well, not necessarily. Sometimes districts have PhDs or doctorates, sometimes they have CAGs, sometimes they have, like in North Andover, seventy-five.
But they're all associated with actual levels of education and credits earned at the university level.
The, well, there's many ways people develop credits. So a lot of school systems for their column and lane advancement, a lot of other CBAs allow you to take professional development points. I also represent Melrose, so that's popping in my head, but just as a for instance, where every fifteen hours of professional development you do, and Melrose is worth one credit on the pay scale, so there's, there's conversion.
And we have a system like that here, too.
There's conversion to it.
Right, there's some, some level of conversion, too, as well. It's not regular professional development, it's extra, it's extra professional development.
Not necessarily.
In North Andover.
Fair enough, but...
Because we're not going to, I'm not going to talk about Melrose's CBA, because that's not my purview. I want to talk about ours.
I get it, yeah.
In North Andover, extra professional development, that you can sign up through Ms. Ando, Ms. Larkum, and, and then you can do those courses.
Or through Idaho State University.
Please don't cut me off.
Okay.
Those are provided as an extra benefit that, and often free, that educators can use to earn credit to move up the pay scale. Those are longer than and more rigorous than these, and I feel like that is a benefit that we are providing that is quite good. I worry that when you can take a, how good is a course that you can take in such a quick time, and is that really rigorous and equal to an actual credit that the intent of that system was meant to build? They're not, they, these are not the same, and I don't think we can equate them to being the same. It's, if they're not being accepted at another degree, I know that we don't need to have a degree in place or be seeking a degree to earn the credits, but if these are not able to be used towards any degree, that means they're not the same, right? These are less than or different than degree, not less than, I, I strike that. They're different than a degree-level graduate or university-level credit.
Yes, as a lot of professional development that you guys provide here.
But professional development is different. We're talking about degree-level or graduate-level courses. University-level courses is the language, that's different. We built that other system to help people, but this is, but this part of the system is something different, right?
Can I answer?
Yeah, please.
It would probably be the same for any overgraduate-level credit we would take at any over...
But these aren't graduate-level.
They are graduate-level.
Fifteen hours to take a course and you don't, there's like no interaction with anybody else?
They're still graduate-level.
I mean, I will speak from personal experience, and I've gotten credits through Colorado State, as well as Fitchburg State, for taking courses through Landmark Outreach. Those programs are completely online. I do not talk to a teacher or a professor in any of it. I go through the coursework. It is my responsibility to watch the videos, it's my responsibility to take part in any discussion posts. It's all on me to do. At the end, all I have to do is submit the completion from Landmark Outreach, which is associated with Landmark School in Beverly, and I am awarded the graduate credit via the institution that I seek. The institution doesn't ask me for anything other than a completion form from Landmark. Those are not acceptable, and I did reach out to Fitchburg State. They said, "No, they would not be acceptable if I wanted to continue my education and get a degree in moderate special needs." They wouldn't be considered because they were not part of a degree program, and it's not what they would take. But I still was able to earn one graduate-level credit for taking that fifteen-hour course and doing the work, which was completely applicable to my job as a first-grade teacher when I took it, because it was all about the five components of reading.
Yep, but we're not talking about ones from Landmark right now.
But it's the same principle, that's what we're saying.
I understand the same principle, but we, we're not taught, the, the quality is different.
But how do you judge the quality is different? What proof do you have that the quality is different?
What proof do you have that it's the same?
But what proof do you have?
So it goes back and forth, we don't, I think that's the...
I, I think our, our position would be it's accredited.
It's professional, it's the Albion Center for Professional Development.
Uh-huh, yep.
That's different than earning graduate or university-level credits.
So I, I wouldn't...
And that's, what does the contract say?
I wouldn't disagree that the concept of professional development, which shares a parallel track with a lot of graduate-level work, which in itself is a form of professional development in the context of a continuing education degree, but only that, as you were saying earlier, a lot of extra professional development provided here in North Andover, right, applies to the same...
It's a different benefit, but yeah.
Yeah, so...
I just, when I go to do my, renew my own license, I can submit professional development from other places that would be recognized by the state for recertification. That is different than using graduate or university-level credits to advance myself on the salary schedule. They're two different things.
But on those transcripts, sir, it says...
And they, and they also say you need to check with your district and state of whether or not it's going to be acceptable.
But it will say that to any of you who wants.
So, just, just to that point, and I guess we can probably move on, is as recently as last year, it was acceptable in North Andover and prior years before that, so...
And that's what we're here to talk about, is whether or not maybe it should, maybe it should not have been approved.
That's certainly, that's certainly the question the committee has to consider.
All due respect, please don't tell me when and when not I should move on. I have the right to ask questions in this forum. Thank you.
Of course, Mr. Hurst, I don't know why you're being so combative.
I'm asking some questions, and you said, "And then we'll move on," and like, "I'll decide when I'm done speaking, you're asking questions," or the chair can, that's not your purview. Thank you.
Absolutely, we're here to discuss our grievance. We're going around in circles, I don't know why you're being so aggressive.
There's thousands of universities throughout the country. Why this one? Why, why is this one particularly so important to, to NADA?
It's, it's simply a program a lot of folks have utilized before in the past, and one in which they've received this benefit and credit before in the past. So we're here to assert the right to continue accessing that, and it is up to the committee to hear our grievance and make a decision and deliberate amongst yourselves on how you wish to proceed with that. And if we can't come to mutual understanding around the interpretation, there's, you know, other steps in the process for us to continue.
But what makes this benefit? You say, you said because of the benefit it offers, but what makes this benefit so much greater than the thousands of other university and graduate courses offered throughout the country?
I, I don't, I don't think that's the argument we're here to make or claim, to say that this is the only...
But it could help us in our decision.
And I'm simply saying it is one that a lot of members have found to be effective and useful, that they have found the program to fit into their professional lives and to be able to learn and grow through these programs, and it's one that a lot of members like to utilize. They, members utilize other online programs as well that aren't in dispute right now. So it's not that this is the only one for members, but this is the one we're here to talk about tonight because it's, it's been denied.
Right, but you're fighting for this one, so there's obviously, there's a reason that this, that this one is of such great importance, and that's what we're trying to understand.
I don't know that it's this one that is of such great importance. I think it is the fact that there are so many, and if we begin to deny this one, what's going to stop us from tagging on something else next year? Okay, so now we're not going to take anything from Laverne University. That's another one that's, a lot of teachers have taken courses from. So it's like, where does it stop, or how do we define it? I guess that is...
Well, I, I think that's what we're trying to do, is say, "This is the standard. What's an acceptable university and graduate course versus a professional development course?" And I think that's what, what the purpose is.
We have a procedural question, which is, is it our job to decide the merits, or is it our job to decide whether the superintendent was acting within her rights under the contract? So far, the discussion seems to be whether we should second-guess the superintendent's judgment. I just want to know what, under the contract, what is our role?
Yeah, I think it's our role to look at the contract and understand what the, what the contract allows.
So then, so then the question really isn't about this course, it's whether the superintendent...
Well, it's whether this course falls within what the contract states is allowable.
But she, okay, so maybe we should read again, exactly what is she allowed to do?
I'm doing the copy, just that I have the small section in the contract, but not the full piece, just having some of me, but I can...
Give you copies, I mean, at some point. It says, "Teachers may complete college and university-level courses and/or graduate programs to advance on the teacher's salary schedule. The superintendent and/or their designee must pre-approve courses and program in order to be eligible for advancement." It also says, "Course approval and advancement is based on the criteria that the course is aligned with system-wide goals and is appropriate for the teaching assignment. If the superintendent or their designee rejects a course because it does not fit the criteria, the teacher will receive notification that his or her course was not approved."
So am I missing something, or that, that doesn't say that you have to approve it? And it doesn't say that, what it appears to me to say is that the superintendent is allowed to say, "This course doesn't meet our objectives," and it doesn't say that there's a right to appeal, which would mean that we wouldn't even get into the question of whether we agree with her. Is that, am I, am I right about that, or am I missing something?
A little bit. So for background information, when I took my position as Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, one of my job responsibilities is to approve, pre-approve courses that come through my learning plan or through the frontline, through their, through the program that is established. Based on what I was seeing, you know, so I'm new in the position, so I'm looking at the, the courses that are being, that are taken. I am judging them against rigor and the criteria that we would want to see, judging them based on my own professional knowledge of what I believe a graduate course is, and what we all believe. I mean, I think everybody sitting in this room has a graduate degree. So my first responsibility as the designee from the superintendent was that these, I believe they did not fit the requirement that we were looking for. I shared that with the superintendent at the time and shared with him that would be my, my plan was to deny these courses. I reached out to NADA, I shared a letter with them that they did, that Idaho State came to my attention that while they had been approved before, these don't meet the rigor of the, of the, that we're expecting from our educators, and moving forward would not be approving any more Idaho State courses, so gave them advanced notice. But did acknowledge that any courses that had been taken prior to my denial, we would continue to accept and approve. There was some conversation about that, it went to a Level 1 grievance. I continue to assert my assertion that these were not graduate-level courses. It was moved to a Level 2 grievance, I believe, last year, and at that time, the current superintendent entered into an MOA with the Teaching Association to allow one course. When I took this job, and when we meet to discuss the MOAs, if we're... When I took this job, and when we meet to discuss the MOAs, if we're going to continue, I shared with NADA that it wasn't my intention to renew this MOA, as my opinion has not changed, that this is not a rigorous class, that there is no teacher, there are no assignments, other than taking the quiz. There is no discussion board, there is nothing that the person has to pass in, and the quiz is, "Take it until you pass." So you know the questions, it's "Take it until you pass." I did not believe that this was going to advance our students or do anything to support our students. It has some professional development, I took the SEL one. I mean, I'll tell you, one of the questions on my quiz was, "Is SEL a good idea, true or false?" I think we all would accept, true. But in terms of, "Why are you here?", because I said no, and the association has the right to grieve that. They have the right to say that we don't believe that your no is okay. And it's one of those weird things, because I'm both Level 1 and Level 2 in this point. So I denied Level 2, and that's why they're here, to appeal to the school.
My, my specific question is whether we're supposed to decide on the merits of your judgment, or we're, or we're supposed to decide whether you have the right to do what you do?
Both, it's both. You, you're both, you're judging whether or not I had the right to do what I did, and if I was, my, my reasoning behind it was correct. Or if you agree with me.
So I, I have a question.
Sure.
I, I heard an accreditation quoted from something called the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities. I don't believe that's a nationwide organization by its name, I've never heard of it. I would ask you, does that, I mean, that's not the normal accreditation system for colleges and universities.
No.
So I, I, I don't put a lot of weight behind that. I'm also a college professor, so, you know, I, and I teach both hybrid, online, and in-person courses, so I have a pretty good understanding of what's involved in the rigor, and I'm, I'm finding it difficult to, to believe that this is a rigorous set of criteria. Thank you.
Superintendent, just a couple of questions, just to make sure I understood some of what you were stating earlier. I know you said you took one of the courses, did it, it took you a half an hour, did I hear you correctly? To complete the course?
Correct.
It's a half an hour.
I didn't take the course, I just took the test and passed, and it was done.
So you were, but to go through, anybody could do that, these courses that we're saying are best for our, you know, helping to our educators?
Correct.
Took you a half an hour, and then you said there was at least, and I just want to make sure this isn't an extreme outlier or a trend, but that someone took, a, a working professional, took eight graduate-level courses in one semester?
Correct.
And that would be...
Eight courses from the Albion Center in one semester, correct.
So I just want to make sure I understand what that's an equivalent to, and just if I remember my grad school days, you're talking, I worked full-time and I could only do three, and that was basically...
Usually for a year?
Yeah.
Or semester, yeah.
Okay, so that was eight, so it's more than double what a typical person would be able to do. And still work, okay. And is that an extreme case? Or do we have other cases where people are taking well more?
Which is what, why I went down the path I went. So I was new here, I wanted to know my job well, I started looking at these courses, and started to see a trend that more than what, I mean, I've been to graduate school. I, I, I wouldn't have been able to do that, so it made me look further into them to see if these were really appropriate. And what I said in my denial letter is that these could be very appropriate professional development courses, which teachers have to take in order to, you know, to keep their certification and renew their certification, and I have no problem with them being professional development. But to move on the salary scale, so, you know, the implication is if you're taking eight, you're moving very rapidly up on the salary scale and able to advance from masters to masters plus fifteen, thirty, forty-five, seventy-five. That could happen within a very short amount of time.
Ms. Lath, one follow-up, I'm sorry, have other courses been, been denied?
No.
And typically with other courses, just trying to compare them, oh, I think I just, I'm sorry, Joe. When, when our educators are taking courses from, taking college and university-level courses from other providers, how many, how many courses do they typically take at a time while they're working? Is it one or two?
One or two.
So that's normal, would be one or two?
Yeah, yes.
Eight, not normal.
Well, superhuman.
So what I'd like to do, if it's, if it's all right with Mr. Taryn and, and NADA, is I'd like to see the documents that you have, and I think the rest of the committee would like to. If we could take some time to review them, and what I would instruct, if, if we could get copies, if we could review them, I'll instruct the committee to not have any discussion on this until our next meeting. If we could meet again and render a decision at that time after we've had an opportunity to fully review the documents.
I can make copies, and can I send them to you?
And I can forward them on.
You can send them to Michelle, and she can forward them.
And Michelle, yes, that would, that would be great.
Yeah, I need it for mine, Lynn, sorry.
Question, Madam Chair, are, are we able, just procedurally, are we able to discuss this with town council?
Procedurally, we, you can individually, one-on-one speak with...
Individual, one-on-one, talk with town council.
Yes, we cannot speak with one another.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the second?
It's not the Aurora.
Isn't that awesome?
It went to sleep like we all want to.
It's out watching the Aurora.
I could do like I do in my classroom, just turn my computer.
It works, it works.
Yeah.
Maybe?
Nope.
Hang on, it just recognized it, my computer takes a little...
Oh, okay, yep. I was going to suggest you hit the up arrow a couple of times. Seriously.
I just heard this click.
Here we go, here we go. That one's not up.
That one's just clicked on, so I see the light now.
Good.
All right, so we're going to move on to the .9 and .8 teaching assistants. These are the teaching assistants that work with our youngest kids here in North Andover. They're the ones that are employed at the ABEC, and so they work with our preschool students. They work just with the preschool students, right?
Yes.
That's why I'm, yeah. All right, which offers a unique schedule. So, under the TDA's contract, those .9, .8 teaching assistants were hired as full-time employees. They work the contracted building hours for their respective buildings. A .8 would work twenty-six hours, a .9 would work twenty-nine hours. There, those hours are directly associated with the times that the students are in school. So when the students are at school, the TAs are there to support them. As full-time employees, which they are under their contract, they are afforded certain benefits. They are given the fifteen sick days that every teaching assistant across the district receives. They receive three personal days that every TA receives across the district. They are also, under their new contract, given twelve paid holidays. So none of those benefits are prorated just because they work at the ABEC with the preschool students who don't go to school on Friday, or only go half the day on Friday. So they are given all of those same benefits. So what has happened is that their salary has been calculated on the salary that is listed in their contract. The problem with that is that there's, underneath the salary schedule, it says that those salary numbers were calculated for a 1.0 and included the paid holidays. TAs are, are hourly employees, they are paid an hourly rate. So when you look at the salary scale, there is the salary, but there's also the salary, the hourly rate right next to it. So in order to correctly calculate it, this is an example. In order to correctly calculate, and I just one night said, "Let's just go with Level 10." It has no specific meaning, you could take it anywhere. In order to calculate it, forty-two, six, twenty-two is the salary that is listed. For a Level 10 TA, their paid holidays are twenty-six, thirty-six, forty. You have to deduct that amount, which gets you to thirty-nine, nine, eighty-five. That would be their salary. To find out what a .9 would work, you then can multiply it, and you come to thirty-five, nine, eight, seven, oh, four. You then add back that number, and you get thirty-eight, six, twenty-three, forty-four. Are you following me so far? That's a lot of numbers. Now, the next section, what happens when you don't deduct it? Well, essentially, you prorate the twelve paid holidays. So taking that same Level 10 TA, salary forty-two, six, twenty-two, multiply it by .9, you come out thirty-eight, three, five, nine, eighty. That results in a difference of two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and sixty-four cents that those TAs are not getting in pay, because their benefit of twelve paid holidays is being prorated when we figure their salary off of the salary listed in the table. It's got to be figured off their hourly rate, because they are full-time employees under the contract. And I know Ginny Burns is here, she was part of the writing of their contract, and the language that was put in the contract at that time was very carefully crafted so that those .9 and .8 TAs did not get looked at as any less than a full-time employee in the North Andover Public Schools. So what we are asking for is we're asking that their compensation be recalculated so that they receive the full amount due for the benefit of the twelve paid holidays that they've been granted in their current contract. I tried to talk slow, I do talk fast, sorry.
I think we followed.
Appropriate speed.
Thank you. Ms. Lath.
Okay, so I just want to say that I don't think they're any less than a full-time employee in terms of their work and their value, that is, that is not, that was not the intention. And I think I have said that several times already. This did make its way to a Level 2 grievance, and what the decision was, was that after carefully reviewing all the available information, much of what you've seen here, I determined there was no violation of collective bargaining agreement that occurred in this instance. Specifically, Article 2, Section 6B states, "Employees hired into a part-time position will be afforded the same rights and benefits of a full-time position, but paid time-off accruals and payouts will be prorated to match the part-time, full-time equivalency." So these are payouts, so that is why they are prorated at a .9.
Would you just read that again, please, Pam?
Sure.
We have it too in our packet.
It's in your packet.
Sorry, do we have the actual contract?
"After carefully reviewing all available information, we have, I have determined that no violation of collective bargaining agreement has occurred in this instance. Specifically, Article 2, Section 6B states, 'Employees hired into a part-time position will be afforded the same rights,' which is what Denise was talking about, so same rights in terms of personal time, sick time, same rights and benefits as a full-time employee, but paid time-off accruals and payouts will be prorated to match the part-time FTE equivalency." This has been a challenging, I'm not going to lie to you, this has been a challenging one to, to, to deal with. I look strictly at the payout, the salary scale, and what was budgeted. So if you budget, and I, sorry, I'm trying to, scrolling through the contract here. So as Denise said, forty-two thousand, six hundred, I think that's the one you used, Level 10, forty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars was budgeted for a full-time. If, if that's what we think of as a full-time employee, that's what was budgeted. Point nine of that salary is what they're being paid in terms of the hours that they work, so their hourly rate, and it's the twelve vacation days that are being prorated. I, I can't make any more money than what's been budgeted for a full-time person. Basing it off of, that's what, what the decision was based off of. I, I can also say there is a little discrepancy about hours. Just let me get back to page eight in the contract, hold on. The teaching assistants, I think specifically the ones that work .9, work three and a quarter, or three and a half hours on Friday?
On Fridays?
Yes.
They work three hours, I think we talked about this. So on Fridays, they work from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty.
But aren't you putting, wasn't...
In the, in the, in the contract, it says that we leave at eleven-thirty, as opposed to eleven-forty-five, which should be three-point-two-five, because that's half of six and a half, which is our typical...
But you've been being paid for three-point-two-five?
Right now, we're not, we're being paid for three. If I do my calculation, I'm being paid for three. It's the .8, so the .9s, it's a couple hundred dollars. The .8 TAs are the, are the biggest losers in the way that this is being calculated right now. They're the ones that are most, most affected. The .9s are affected, but we work, we don't work the three-point-two-fives, so that fifteen minutes times, I think it was thirty-six Fridays or whatever, kind of offsets it a little with that .9 calculation.
Be something to look at, because I think you were paid three-point-two-five hours.
Well, if I, I mean, if I do my paycheck right now, I'm, I'm being paid for three hours on, on Friday. I've done the calculations, I can certainly send that to Pam.
But that was the conversation originally?
Yes.
Was, you were being paid at three-point-two-five?
Right, and then when we went back and, or you went back and looked at it with, I think Debbie and Jane, and you were like, "Well, wait, I think they leave at eleven-thirty on Fridays, so that's only three hours." And we're like, "Okay, you're right," so we got to readjust that calculation.
But we...
So it's closer for the .9s, the way that payroll is calculating right now. It is not close at all for the .8s.
But so you were paid for three-point-two-five last year, but you were leaving at eleven-thirty?
No, it was the same, it was the same calculation last year. And we didn't...
That was none of the things that were brought forward, were three-point-two... Yeah, so, I'm so sorry, so I'm just saying, I'm just trying to get something, so... All the, all of the documentation that has been showed to me and that has come towards, towards me has been at a three-point-two-five for Fridays. And my belief is, and we'd have to go back and look at payroll, is that all the .9 employees were paid for three-point-two-five hours up until, if you believe, this year, which I did bring forth, saying that the contract says to eleven-thirty. But if they've only been leaving at eleven-thirty prior to, they, my new assertion is they've been overpaid.
Well, that, actually, that's not correct, because, and the reason why is, up until we got the paid holidays, we always just went on the assumption that payroll deducted the, the point, the ten percent from the .9s and the twenty percent from the .8s, and that's how we all, we all calculated our paychecks, that, that's way, that, that was how we were told it was done, and that was the equivalent to the hours that we worked. It wasn't until we were negotiating for the holidays, and we started counting up the hours and the days, and we're like, "Wait a minute, we've been shorted all this time." So in fact...
Shorted the holidays, it's shorted the hours?
This was long before holidays. They were calculating our pay this way, and it was wrong. If you had actually sat down and figured out the number of hours we worked times the number of days, the .9s are being shorted by maybe a couple hundred bucks, not even, but the .8s, the people that work four days a week, were being shorted by several hundred. And now with the twelve holidays, some of them that are on the higher levels are going, are going to be shorted over four hundred dollars in the, at the end of the year. And we can show you those calculations for .8s.
We're focusing on the holidays.
We're focusing on holidays, so we have...
So what I'm saying was, we didn't figure this out until we started to negotiate our contract, and we were asking for the twelve holidays, and once we got the twelve holidays, it was agreed it would be built into the salary schedule, as Denise explained. Once they built it into the salary schedule, and then deducted the point, do you understand?
I do.
The point one, the one percent of the, the ten percent, the twenty percent.
If the, what you're being paid hourly for .8, .9 is incorrect, that's a different remedy. We're, right now, we're going to just talk about the holiday portion.
So it, so that's my point. The original calculation for our pay was not being done correct.
Right, and, but that's not what this is about right now. That's, if that's, if your, if your statement is correct, and I'm not denying that's not, that's a different issue that we would have to talk about.
So what we brought, I brought that up to Jim Mealy.
But that's not with the grievance.
The grievance is about something else.
So this is how it came to be. So when I brought this up to Jim Mealy, and then I mentioned it to Pam at the end of last year, and then when we got the twelve holidays, and we were back and forth trying to figure out, because I kept showing one number, Pam had other numbers, and then Pam came back with, "Yes, but the holidays, the reason why we're not agreeing is because you're not prorating your holidays, and you should be." And I said, "No, we shouldn't, we negotiated twelve holidays, full pay by the district." And, and Pam's contention back to me was, "No, the holidays should be prorated." And, and so that was how the holidays all got entered into it.
And I understand, like, so, I understand the miscalculations of the, of the salary for .8, .9, and I understand that, but right now, before us, is about the holidays. So I think that we should, could... So we, I think that we should, could, should only focus our conversation on that.
Okay.
And if, if there's other things, then we should have another conversation about that as well.
Right, right.
Like, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, because if it was, if it was wrong, it was wrong, and we want to fix that. But right now, I only can talk about this one.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So, yes. So we did negotiate twelve.
What article was that?
Twelve holidays per.
The twelve holidays?
Yeah.
Does anyone have that contract?
Yeah.
I have it, right.
Yeah, they were supposed to be in the packet, and they are.
Oh, is it here?
No, they were supposed to be.
You had, you had it up on the predication, Denise, I think.
I can put it, I have it.
Can you put it up?
Do you want to see the holidays?
These are the holidays. This is a list for the holidays.
I just wanted to see the language of the contract that describes it.
As do I. Yeah.
Which slide would you like?
I need the.
With, with the articles, just which article is it? Article four?
I think this is the one where there is, the, I think, from what I'm seeing, the confusion comes from Article Two and Number Five, where it says, "All unit members hired under this contract are full-time employees and work the contracted building hours as outlined in Article Four."
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And I think what's happening is we're pulling language from a part-time section of the TA contract. They are not part-time employees. They are hired as and recognized as, under this contract, as full-time employees.
Can you go to the part that talks about the vacation? Does the vaca, the paid holiday vacation cost?
Page twenty-two.
Thank you.
I don't know that it's on here.
Do you think it's on page twenty-two? I have it in front of me.
I don't. Is that it?
Yeah, can we, can we hand it over to Pam if she can? Yeah. We just, we need to go in the middle here.
Hang on.
Yeah, we can see the whole.
It's caught in over there.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Here we go.
Beginning September first, twenty-twenty-three, unit members on levels four to twelve of the twenty-three, twenty-four salary schedule will receive twelve paid holidays per year. And beginning September first, unit members one to three of the twenty-four, twenty-five salary schedule receive twelve paid holidays per year. Holiday pay is included in the amounts shown in the salary schedule.
So we, we take.
They're included in the amount shown in the salary schedule. And if you take point nine of that.
Got it.
You have to.
So, thank you.
That's figured as a one-point-oh.
So I guess what, oh, sorry.
So I, I just want to reiterate, when Pam keeps going back to point nine and this refers to one-point-oh, we are considered full-time employees and we receive all the benefits of a full-time employee. None of our benefits are now or have ever been prorated. So there is no reason why suddenly the twelve holidays that we negotiated should be prorated based on my point nine status or the point eight status. We should receive them as we do the fifteen sick days, the three personal days, um, et cetera.
So, I'm sorry.
Well, I just like, so the way I'm, I'm struggling, like, I understand what you're saying. I don't think there's, I don't think it's the wrong interpretation. I just like, I'm, what I'm struggling with in my mind is when, if you work a day, let's just, like, if you work for the day and your hours adds up to you make, like, I know it's not the right amount. It's much lower than what it is if you make a hundred dollars, right? If you then, if you take the day off, if you use a vacation day, you should be paid the same amount. But what hap, but if, what you're, Keston's saying is that we, you would be making more for your days off than your days there.
So can I, can I add?
Does that make sense?
That's what I'm, right.
So this.
Because if you make a hundred dollars, if, if, if full-time employees make, who work the full, all the things, not that, would make a hundred dollars, at point nine, you make, you make the ninety dollars. But then if I pay you, uh, on the full, on the day off, the full-time rate, you're making ten dollars more than you did on your day of working.
So could I help clarify something?
Yeah.
So if you go to, um, the salary scale, it's on page thirty-eight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, and you can, in that little window at the top, you can type. So if you go to the, if you go to the bottom of the scale there with the asterisk, so, teaching assistant or education support professionals, um, are always paid with this hourly formula, um, which is based off of the hours amount, the amount of hours they work per day multiplied by whatever work days they are, right? So what we're trying to point out is for the point nines or the point eights, that fraction is being applied not to the days, but to the hours, right? They work point nine of a six-point-five-hour day. They don't work point nine of a hundred-and-eighty-two-day school year.
They do. They work point, they don't work point nine of the six-point-five day.
Over the course of the, over the course of the year, it would be point eight or point nine of a school year.
So their salary is a multiplication, right, between the hours and the days. The agreement to the twelve paid holidays, right, aren't, that they have, it, it's, it's a way of increasing teaching assistant compensation, right?
Yeah.
On the pay scale without inflating the hourly rate too much, right? So it's a way of getting to a, closer to a livable wage without their hourly rate looking so, um, much larger than what people would typically expect, right? Because the school day is just the school day, and that's what they're working. So the twelve hours being added, or, excuse me, the twelve holidays being added, right, were part of that calculation that, for all, for all of those members, but it should also be applied equally to the point eights or the point nines.
I guess my confusion is, if you add up the amount of hours that they're working, and you did the math, or the number of days they're working total, the one-point-ohs are work, is a hundred-and-eighty-two. But if you add up the point nine, the point nines, they're only working a total of a hundred-and-sixty-three-point-eight days. Is that, am I, is that a wrong way to see it? If it is, please tell me. That's, I'm actually asking that question. Like, is that, that's.
That's correct. So we work point nine of the, I, I don't know the exact number. I've done it a million times. But as it's one, yeah. So we work that many days.
So then, the part where I'm confused is, if you're working point nine of the time and you are a level twelve, why do we have to do it differently than just multiplying four, five, eight, three, seven, if that was your salary? I know there's a bunch of them there, but if you were in that first column, um, by point nine. If I do that to get to the actual number of days you work, why don't I do that for the actual amount of money you get paid?
We, we don't, they don't do it with, so if you, what they do is they, if you count up the number of days that you work, so for example, if you count up the number of days I work as a point nine, and I work six-point-five hours, Monday through Thursday, and then the three hours on the Friday. So I, I don't know if it's one-hundred-and-sixty-whatever days. So.
One-sixty-three point eight.
I get paid six and a half hours times a hundred-and-sixty-three days. And then I get paid for the three hours on the Friday. I'm an hourly employee. That's how I'm paid. If you do the math, if I, I wish I had my calculation, brought my calculations with me. But for the point eights and the point nines, we sat down, we did, we sent them to Pam. We said, this is how many days we work. This is how many hours we work. This is my hourly rate. I multiply it out. This is what I should be getting paid. In addition to that, I have, I am now awarded twelve holidays times six-point-five because they're twelve full days that we are getting paid as an extra benefit. Those twelve days are at six-point-five hours. Add that to the number of hours I work a year.
Does it say in the contract that it's at six-point-five hours?
It says twelve, twelve paid holidays. Those are full days. It doesn't say that they're prorated.
Both.
There's no proration of the holiday. They're full holidays we are paid. Just as you're paid a whole day. Yes.
Can you, I, I, can you show me where, please? I'm not saying it's not, I'm not, it's not that I'm not believing you. I just want to see it.
Page twenty-two.
Thank you.
So you, that's our, that's our argument, is you cannot prorate the holidays. That's all we're, that's all we're asking.
Who's that?
Twelve paid holidays per year.
Holidays per year. It doesn't say it will be prorated.
Okay, sure, we have that.
My sick days are not prorated. My personal days are not prorated. My health insurance, nothing is prorated. We just got awarded these twelve holidays in this new contract. And unfortunately, because of the budget problem and the deficit, and now the discrepancy in this salary schedule that I brought to administration's attention two years ago, even before the holidays, it was never fixed.
Then that, that's unfortunate.
I brought it to Pam's attention. We tried to meet over the summer. We just couldn't get our schedules together. And then when we tried to agree on the numbers, when Pam brought up the argument that the holidays should be prorated, that's when we filed the grievance because the holidays should not be prorated. That's our argument.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Six B?
Everybody's different.
Correct.
This is what I'm having, I'm reconciling, is where it says, "Employees hired into a part-time position will be afforded the same rights and benefits of a full-time employee, but," and that's the key word that I'm stuck on, is this "but."
Can I address this article?
"Paid time off, paid time off accruals and payouts will be prorated to match the part-time FTE equivalency." I mean, that, that, that's a, that's a "but" there. And, and that's, that's a key, a key language.
I need to address that article. The reason why that article is in our contract, and it was just put in, in this new contract, I, I negotiated three contracts with the district. I was the TA co-chair for six years. I've been a TA for twenty years. Full disclosure, Pam hired me at the Franklin School twenty-two years ago. But when, what happened was, over the years, Carol Marshall and I were co-chairs together. Carol has since retired. But when we would have mutual concerns meetings with Greg Landry and Marcy Pecuzzi, the former sped director, and Jim Mealy, occasionally, they would have, um, an instance where a student needed a part-time TA. And if you read our contract, it starts right off with, "All TAs are hired on a full-time basis." There was no provision for part-time TAs. So because we did not have that provision in the contract, if they had a need for a student that just needed a part-time TA, they had to come to us at Mutual Concerns and request, um, us to okay that and write an MOA. So there were several times, and one of the reasons why that happened, for example, was a student was ill and could only come to school for half a day, and that student needed support. So they needed somebody with that student for the half-day. After COVID, there was another student that just needed help on certain classes at the high school in the morning and that didn't need support in the afternoon. In any event, we would have to meet. We'd have to write an MOA. We'd have to agree on it, approve it, add it to our contract. And because of the time that that took, it was actually detrimental to the student because they couldn't get, hire them a TA quickly because they had to go through this whole process. So over the years, we had always talked about, maybe we should have something in the contract that would provide for that, um, allowance if it should come up again. And so Carol and I had a lot of conversations with the three of them. We were very concerned that if we allowed it, that it would be taken to an extreme and used against us down the road. Um, so that was why we were very careful about how that language is written. And if you read that language, it's for a specific student need on a yearly basis, and it has to be approved by the co-chairs of the TA, um, unit. Because we did not want this to be used against us down the road and as far as, um, jeopardizing the full-time TAs. So that was only to address those concerns. We went into, you know, good faith bargaining to allow that in order to help the sped department when they had those needs that were rare, but just so that it would expedite the process and they could get help to a student. So using that to argue this point is not in good faith, as far as I'm concerned. It's not what the school department agreed to. It's not what administration agreed to. And I would encourage you to speak to Greg Landry, if you would like. I understand Pam wasn't here then, so she wasn't part of any of these conversations. She has, you know, wouldn't have that information. Carol has retired. Obviously, Jim's gone. Marcy's gone. Greg Landry was part of these conversations, and I, I feel confident that, that he would, um, back me up on what I'm saying as far as what these discussions were and how we finally agreed to that.
So I just want to, can I make a couple of points to that? Or do you want to?
I, I, well, no, I just, I just want to, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, like, but, I mean, I, I read a lot of contracts on a daily basis. And when it comes to contract law, it's what's in the four corners. And what I'm reading in the four corners is a "but." And so say this was to go into an administrative board, you look what's in the four corners of the contract. And so just as reference, that's what you look at when you look at a contract. I, I get that you're trying to give background information of why it's there, but that's what has to be looked at when you're looking at a contract.
Well, that's, that, that is not entirely true in terms of interpretation of our collective bargaining agreement. So if we were to proceed into arbitration, the bargaining notes from this, especially it being a new provision, and this is its first test of enforcement, would absolutely be part of that conversation and that presentation as well as probably testimony from the folks who were involved in that bargaining process. The spirit, because obviously, the language is conflicting with that provision you're citing and with the rest of the CBA language, as well as what is clearly the, what was the mutual understanding of the parties when they agreed to it, I think is, at least that's our, that's what we're claiming, right? You guys may not agree with that claim, but our claim was, when we came to this understanding, the twelve days are being added, right, for everybody in the unit, regardless of their, their status. And as part of these calculations, the six-point-five hours times the one-eighty-two, or in the point nine and point eight cases, the one-sixty-three or whatever, the twelve days then get added on to that one-sixty-three universally for everybody. Because the spirit of the twelve days was not that you're now getting paid. Again, it was a, a way to try to compensate more fairly and equitably and humanely this bargaining unit who does the Lord's work, right, in, in the district. And the district was recognizing that and saying, we want to be able to increase the compensation because we want to recruit and retain really good TAs, and we want a really competitive TA salary package, which they achieved, which you all achieved. Um, and the twelve days were, as opposed to just increasing the hourly rate, the twelve days was a way of increasing that compensation without the hourly rate becoming ballooning in a way that would probably, you know, raise red flags in other, um, town offices. So I think Ginny's point, like, if, if we were to proceed arbitration, if you were to deny the grievance and we weren't able to reach a resolution, the four corners obviously always matter, right? But past practice matters, and certainly for a new provision that's just being tested for the first time, the spirit of what was happening during negotiations definitely comes into the conversation. I'm not saying that gives us a light soured arbitration. I don't think there is such a thing, right? It's always a coin flip, but at best. But that's part of our thinking here. And obviously Ginny, who is there with others from the district who is there, was, was, that's what they were contemplating. They weren't contemplating the twelve days would be prorated. And perhaps that means there needs to be an update to the bargaining language to better reflect that mutual understanding. But that was the understanding at bargaining.
So just a couple of things to add. So my decision does not have any, um, correlation to my value in teaching assistants, nor do I, or their worth. Well, I just want to be clear because it's, I feel as though that has been implied. That has nothing to do with it.
That was on my intention to imply that, so I apologize if that was the implication.
I appreciate that, but I just wanted to put that out there. Isn't that, that is not where this comes from. It's hard to not go that route, but that is not where this comes from. When this was brought to my attention, when I was the acting superintendent, I was told, I, I was, it was brought to my attention by Mutual Concerns, the TA Association, that I owed them more money. And we did have a budget issue, but regardless of whether or not you have a budget issue, I think the person in that position, when someone is telling them that they owe them more money, you're going to dive in and you're going to try to figure out why. So I looked at the salary scale and tried to, you know, I did the ma, I did math. I, if you have budgeted, so last year, whatever, this year, if we're just sticking at Level Ten of this year, if you have budgeted forty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, this salary scale was created in order to help the district create a budget. So you know how many teaching assistants you have. If you have X amount of teaching assistants, this is what that you're going to pay them. If you have a one-point-oh, you create a budget based on that. If you have teaching assistants that work for point nine, point eight, point six, point five, you're then going to use math to figure out how much money you need to budget for that position. That is what's hap, that's what happened. So I strictly looked at this and from a budgeted situation and what the percentage of that is, what amount of money you budget. And what I said to them last year was, this is over the budgeted allotment of money. It doesn't make sense to me. Now, we were in June. My, I, I in good faith believed that they were told by the former finance, assistant superintendent for finance, that he would pay those extra two-hundreds and three-hundreds dollars last year. While we did not have the funds to be able to do that, remind you that we ended in a deficit last year, I approved that money because I believed in good faith they were promised that money. This year, when the budget is a budget that I am controlling, again, I can only look at math. This year, when the budget is a budget that I am controlling, again, I can only look at math. And the math says $42,622 is a full-time. .9 of that equals whatever money is budgeted. It says in this document here that these 12 holidays were figured into this figure. So I made the assumption, and then I read in the contract, that it's prorated for a .12. Whether or not it was the intention, that's the only way you can make the math and the budgeted amount work. And I explained that when I had said, you can't, .9 of a full-time salary, that's the only amount of money that was budgeted for this position. And then looking at the contract, I'm not, you know, it says you still do have your full-time sick time, your full time off, all of those other things, but that any, I don't know what page it's on now, I think page four, any of those extras are prorated at that time. And that's the way that the budget, that's the amount of money that was put in the budget. That's the amount of money that we have that was budgeted for. So whether or not that was the assumption, that's what prior administration budgeted for, for this school year. And my, what I said to, in my position, I could not in good faith put more district funds to something that was not budgeted for. You're asking me to give more money than what was budgeted for that position.
I understand that Pam, we had that discussion. My contention was the math was wrong, that they have been calculating our pay wrong.
I understand, I'm just explaining to the board so they understand where the.
So my contention with Pam was, and with administration was, that all along, the math was wrong. And if I go back five years from now and redo my, my hours times my days and what I was being paid versus what I was owed, I am telling you now, I was shorted every single year. It was just that once we got awarded the holidays, it's like, oh, I'm going to add this all up and see what this comes out to. And then a bell went off that it wasn't right, that when they were taking the 10% or the 20% from the .9s and the .8s, we were getting shorted by a few bucks every week, but that adds up to a couple hundred dollars a year. And for people that live paycheck to paycheck, it's a lot of money. This wasn't just because we got the holidays. It was I, I paid attention to it when we were getting, when Carol and I were doing the math, when we were doing the contract. We were, if the light bulb came on, and when we did the .8 calculations for the people that work Monday through Thursday, the number was even greater. Now, we're talking, so my contention is, is yes, that's what the district planned their budget on, but the math was wrong. And so just because somebody, pardon my, screwed up, we have to stick with it because that's what the budget says. That's what, that's what the town voted on the budget, and that's all you have to spend. Whether it's right or wrong doesn't matter, it's wrong. So it needs to be fixed, or it needs, the 12 holidays need to be recognized as full days, not prorated, and people need to be paid, the TAs need to be paid, the hourly rates they, they work times the number of days they work. Basic, it's basic math.
Right.
Can I, Joe, I haven't had a chance to speak, if you don't mind. It's Madam Chair, I have some questions. So first, is currently, are you still in that position where you think the math is incorrect now?
Yes.
Right now?
They haven't, so our paychecks are, we're, it's all being calculated as, as it says in the contract right now, no, nothing has been changed.
Your hourly rate is correct.
My hourly rate is correct, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But no, but what I'm trying to understand is, under current pay practices, right, are you being paid correctly? Forgetting the holidays for a moment.
So the .9, no, the .9 and the .8 calculations are still being done.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
Yes.
So I think that's something.
Because we're.
No, he asked if you take the holidays out, you're being paid your hourly rate.
In other words, if you're a .9 or a .8, right, are you getting, is payroll correct?
If you take the 12 holidays out.
Just take the holiday issue aside for a moment. Is, because that.
It's not.
It's not correct. You're saying it's not correct.
You're not being paid your hours.
It's not correct.
That's what I thought I heard.
It is not correct. It hasn't been correct for years. That's what I'm saying, this isn't just because we suddenly have holidays. They haven't been doing it right all along. I brought this to attention, administration before this contract.
So I think that's an issue we need to address. That's not what this is about, but that's a separate issue we need to address.
You agreed that the only discrepancy was the paid holidays.
Because you're, you, you, you were trying to, when we were debating back and forth on why the pay was wrong, you said that we weren't agreeing because I wasn't prorating the holidays. And I said, I shouldn't be prorating the holidays, but none of the.
Mr. Brown is asking you to take the 12 holidays out. Are you being paid for the time that you're working with children at your hourly rate?
People are, no, people are still shorted a couple of bucks a paycheck. But if you do the point, the 10% and the 20% deduction versus, versus the actual number.
Because you're counting holidays, because the holidays 10%.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
So what I'm telling you is if you just take, if you took a TA and they made $20 an hour times 6.5 times 182 and divided by 26 paychecks, the way that payroll is processing it right now, they are being shorted by a couple of bucks a paycheck. When you, when you then add 12 more days to that, the 12 full holidays, it increases.
I'm just trying to separate the two issues, so that's what's one.
Let's separate that as a separate issue.
I think that's something we need to get to the bottom of that.
So my argument was always that we need to get the paychecks correct. But then when they came back with saying they were going to prorate our holidays, that's when we.
Okay, no, I understand, I'm hearing you.
Okay.
So that's one thing. Two, I don't, at least from my point of view, in order for me to adjudicate this, I really need to read the entire contract. I don't want to look, I don't want to look at one section here where one per, one side makes an argument and another section there where another side makes an argument. I got to read the whole thing.
We are not rendering a decision tonight. We are going to take time to let the members read the materials, to read through the contract, and we'll reconvene at our next school committee meeting with NADA and their representative to be able to ask any further questions and make a decision at that time.
Because based on what I've seen so far, and this is not a decision, this is just what I'm hearing tonight, I feel like may, perhaps contract has some inconsistencies in it that we may need to address, period, right? Not just to finish this decision, but going forward, if it has inconsistencies in it, that's something we need to deal with. So I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. Moskovich, sorry.
Yeah, listen. I'm trying to make sense of this. Let's take sick pay. The idea of sick pay is you get sick and you will get exactly as much money as you would have gotten if you worked, as you won't lose any money because you were sick. But under your proposal, if you get sick, you'll actually get paid more for that day than if you didn't get sick. That's what I.
No, I only, I have a daily rate, my daily rate is.
No, but that's what you're saying, that if you get sick on Tuesday, you want to be paid for full-time for that day as opposed to the six and a half hours or whatever.
No, I only get paid the six and a half hours. I have a daily rate. So my, my pay is based on, say I make $20 an hour.
Yes.
So 20 times six and a half hours, that's my daily rate, and that's what I would get paid for a sick day.
Okay.
I don't get paid for eight hours.
But it seems to me that you're arguing that somehow because those days are full benefit, you should get paid as if you worked full-time. That's what I thought I heard you guys saying.
We are, we're considered full-time employees.
No, but you normally work, just to make the arithmetic easier, you normally work, let's say, five hours and full-time, whatever it is.
Mr. Moskovich, I'm just going to interrupt for just a moment. We're going to, we're going to conclude this at 10 after the hours. We have our principals here that need a presentation, so if we could just wrap up.
They work six and a half hours.
Yeah.
They work six and a half hour days. Point eights work six and a half hours, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there are no students on Friday.
I think I misspoke earlier when I was talking about the hours. They're, they work fewer days, not fewer hours.
So the dispute is how you handle the, if you get sick on a Friday, is that?
No.
It's a calculation of, I want to make sure I understand, if I might help you. Ms. Lathrup is calculating it by taking, say, 42, 622 and just multiply it times .8.
I know how she's doing it.
Right, this is for me to make sure I understand, and just doing that, that straight calculation. What you're arguing is that it should be 3380 times six and a half times 182 plus 3380 times six and a half times 12.
Exactly.
And when you do it, so it's two different approaches to determining what the correct salary is. You're contending that it should be the second one, and Ms. Lathrup is contending it should be the first. And your reasoning is that for the second one is that according to the contract, we can't reduce or prorate the holiday portion, but we can reduce or prorate the, because you work less hours and we only pay you the hourly thing, but the.
Work less days, less days.
Less days, okay. Thank you, did I say that, did I capture it all correctly?
Correct, so we work less days than a 1.0, but we work the same number of hours a day. All TAs work 6.5 or some.
So when you get paid, you take 33.8, you multiply it times your, whatever it is.
6.5.
Times 182.
Times 182, and then you add the 12 holidays. So for a .9, you just look at the school calendar and you count up how many days we work. And then you, 6.5 times those days, then and you add the 12 days. It's simple math.
Thank you.
All right, thank yous. Thank you.
She did.
Madam Chair.
Real quick.
So will, is it appropriate to have town council, because a lot of this is contract, we need to have town council at the next meeting give us an opinion?
We, yes, we can request that town council be present. Again, materials, if you could send them in, so, and we will distribute them to the rest of the committee so that we can review them and do a full review prior to our next meeting.
Ginny will send you her calculations.
And send them to Michelle and she'll forward them to us.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Under the table. We should have brought the chocolate.
Oh, I got it.
Sugar rush. Jealous, you have a sugar rush. I'm not going to tell you all, I love it. Thank you for offering it to us.
I made it a recommendation to Melissa, I'll make it again when she comes back.
I have nothing to say, unless you have.
No, no.
I can't, I had a hope.
No, you won't.
We're going to jump the, tell dig today, yeah.
Do we need more chairs for you?
I have another one next to me.
I'll stand.
What did you do to yourself, Sally? I'm just. I have a pressure fracture in my shoulder and it's all the way to the.
Relax.
Joe, you can loosen the tie up a little.
Yeah, loosen the tie up.
You're prepared, you comfortable, you okay?
It's keeping just enough pressure off to keep you awake, so. I know that, look, Melissa.
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask that you go out of order and move the principals' presentations, the presentation.
All right, and if I have no objections, I will agree to that. All right, we're going to go out of order, and we are going to go ahead with the school improvement plans.
Awesome, welcome to our amazing K-5 principal team. If you haven't met already, we have Dr. Tiffany Goddard, who is our principal at the ABECC. We have Chris Raymond, who is our principal at the Thompson. Karen Leahy, our principal at the Sargent. Erin O'Laughlin, our principal at the Atkinson. And Joe Clark, our principal at the Franklin. I'm going to be covering for Mr. Cushing, who had a medical appointment tonight or had a issue tonight. And so I just want to celebrate the idea that this brain trust that we have has over 150 years of experience in public education, 65 of that being in the principalship. And as somebody who spent only four years in the principalship myself, I think we need to celebrate the amount of beauty and brilliance and knowledge that we have here at the table with us. And so I am lucky enough to be their teacher in a lot of ways, and so I am very proud of my, my students here. And so we are, our job tonight is to share the district improvement plan as well as our school improvement plans. And so you are going to notice, they are an amazing team who works well together. And what strikes me the most about this group of people is they are incredible learners. They are lifelong learners that never cease to amaze me in what they're willing to do and try in order to make the lives of kids better. And so thank you all for coming. I am going to go over our district improvement goals first, and then I'm going to turn it over to the principals who have, as a team, will present their goals.
And Ms. Ando, if I could just make one comment. If the committee could just reserve all comments and questions till the end of all presentations, that would be appreciated.
Awesome, thank you. Of course, everything is linked to our strategic plan or our vision, but we have three major goals. And so Ms. Lathrup and I, at our leadership retreat this summer, went over our three major goals. And each principal for their school took on those goals in their own way that made sense. Our first goal is about high-quality instructional materials. I know you're shocked that this is like what I'm talking about tonight, right? And deeper learning and equity. And we've talked about before how there are more high-quality instructional materials K, in the K8 realm than there are in the 612 realm. And I know we're like overlapping there. But the idea that like deeper learning is also like what we're getting at in our 6 to 12 world. And so, and you'll notice that in past years, we've had equity as a separate goal. Equity has, has to be folded into everything is what we're learning. So our first goal is around high-quality instructional materials and equity. And so I know, shocking that this is what I'm talking about. Our other acronym that you're going to hear a lot about is MTSS, or a multi-tiered system of support, where we support all students at all tiers, tier one, tier two, and tier three of instruction. All students are our students and tiers are not locations. And so this is our, and our third goal is around budgeting and equity. The Northlander Public Schools implementing strategic decisions and develop efficient systems to ensure we get toward moving toward the operating budget. Now, those are the three goals for the district. The goals that the schools developed are similar in many ways and different in ways that make sense. And I'm going to turn it over to my amazing team, starting with Karen Leahy, to talk about, we're going to talk about the common goals from last year, the common goals for this year, and then there is a unique goal for ABECC because of the age of the students. And so I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Leahy, who's going to talk about our first goal.
Thank you, Kristen, good to be with you all. And you mentioned you're our teacher, where the students, I know the, all the students here agree, we got a great, great teacher. Teacher is with both of you all. I know you haven't really heard from all of us, but I know I certainly speak for everyone that we're just really grateful that we have two leaders, as we have tonight, working with us for the last months and finishing out last spring. I say that with all my heart. So the good news is, I do bring tidings of good joy transitioning in the meeting here, that that we followed a lot of parties, but this was a different one.
It was a tough act to follow.
It was, so, so I hope that we'll keep your attention. The good news sincerely is that the implementation for the goal from last year for the 2324, the principal learning arc, and what that is and what it means to us, is it's a Kristin and Kristin facilitated, and what that means is Kristin, our Kristin here, and Kristin Pizmeti, who's from the Boston College Lynch School of Leadership, who this last year was our third year working with her. We started out doing it collectively as a group, so all of us would meet as principals, curriculum coaches, assistant principals, and assistant superintendents of learning, would all meet together with Kristin and develop just all, a school of thought of what we were going to do. So that happened monthly. Then last year, Kristin came to each one of our schools and met with us individually as principals. We all agreed the time with her was really valuable. So that continues again this year, but that was super successful for us in helping us to do the work from the other Kristin of implementing wit and wisdom with great fidelity in the classrooms. How did we know that we did that well? We did that well, or that the teachers were doing it well in implementing wit and wisdom as a high, the HQIM. And that was because we did group partners, we did group work seeing classes, we did it as individuals, we did it as partners. And we can say with confidence that our teachers are doing tremendous work with it. The pictures I picked to throw in my slide, it happened just as recently as yesterday. The next bullet is model unpacking and looking at student work. I know across the district, we all did this yesterday. It's a directive from Kristin and the curriculum coach, Daki Taylor. So the first picture is just all of us looking at unpacking module two for wit and wisdom right now in live time and how that affects students pulling out the best that we want students to know, the learning skills, vocabulary, and so forth. the first grade with the, my librarian is a camel. And the kids built passports, they were able to look at all of the countries around the world that were remote countries, that they don't have a library, so they get the boats, the books by a boat, by a camel, by a cow, by whatever means, and the first graders were really getting into it. So it was a successful year, and it's a great launch for this year.
With all the love in my heart, Karen, you did a wonderful job.
Oh, right back at you, sister, right back at you.
I'm gonna cover for Mr. Cushing. We practiced yesterday, but, so I'm going to try to substitute. But our second goal from last year that we want to give you an update on is our teachers implementing Eureka Math with increased focus in student-centered instruction. So we're entering year eight of using Eureka Math, which is also a high-quality instructional material, and we recognize that the curriculum needed some updating. And so we had a math curriculum committee last year, led by Benjamin Cabrera, our, one of our math directors, and so the idea that we, you know, voted to adopt Eureka Squared, or pilot Eureka Squared as a, as a, as a resource this year. So we have, based on all of this, we had collaboration meetings and coaching cycles, based on all of this, we have 20 pilot teachers piloting Eureka Squared this year. And all teachers, whether you're using the Eureka Curriculum or the Eureka Squared Curriculum, are participating in PD around successfully orchestrating mathematical discussions in your elementary classroom. So that applies to both resources. And so that is a goal update from our goal for last year, and you'll hear more about what we're doing in our math classrooms from one of our beautiful principals.
Right, this is me. So...
Use the mic.
Oh, yeah. Good. Talking a little bit about using HQIM this year, and educators are utilizing HQIM and research-based teaching practices to provide all students the opportunity to engage in complex grade-level work. So it's been mentioned by Karen and Kristin that we're using these high-quality instructional materials in both ELA with Wit and Wisdom, and in math with Eureka. These are providing equity among all of our students in the district, so that in North Andover Education means the same, no matter which elementary school you're attending. These materials are providing consistency also as the kindergarten students come up to all the elementary schools in first grade. The high-quality instructional materials are giving us all the time to, like, across the district to collaborate. So Karen mentioned that we've been collaborating a lot with Kristin Ando, and then also with Kristin Pizmenti and the Lynch Leadership, and they're helping us as leaders to increase student outcomes. Kristin has shared a lot about the research with you, and then she's also sharing it with us, and we're learning how to use this research to support using HQIM in our schools. These high-quality instructional materials are aligned with our standards, along with professional development, improving student learning outcomes, and the facilitators of collaborative inquiry at each school are helping us to lead professional development throughout the school year. So we're doing a lot of unpacking, the modules that Karen mentioned, and units of study, and then helping to guide staff in looking more at data and student work during our collaboration blocks. So when all these students are experiencing the high-quality teaching with the high-quality teaching materials, they're obviously more likely to learn, and Karen talked a little bit about the Socratic seminars. It's pretty awesome that across the district, we're, we're all on par with what we're working on. So I also saw a lot of Socratic seminars this week, and I'm amazed when I go into a second-grade classroom and they're sitting there talking about comparing characters from different books, but one person's talking at a time, they each have their little talking stick, and it's passed around. But the equity was so apparent because every single student had the opportunity to talk. So no matter what type of learner you are, this, these high-quality instructional materials are supporting all of our learners, and it was just really great to see that, like I said, no matter what type of learner you are, no matter what grade level you're in, all students have a voice, so.
Thank you.
All right, Goal Two, this is me. So you've heard a lot about HQIM, and that term keeps coming up tonight, and certainly curriculum is a good foundation for our kids, and we need to have high-quality instructional materials for our kids in the classrooms. The next level of that would really be taking a look at our assessments, because we want to know that what we're doing is working, and if it's not, what can we do to continue to move our students forward? So assessment and equity tied together. So our goal this year is that our educators are gonna continue to expand and fortify their use of the M-Class Assessment as a way to support students in their foundational reading skills. Readings, the foundational reading skills are so important because they're such a gateway into the rest of the curriculum and all the content areas for kids. So if we can really give our kids a boost in those areas and help them, it's gonna help them in all areas. In the spring, some work started with identifying an M-Class Leadership Team in each building in conjunction with the district. And so that was typically made up of our reading interventionists and a teacher, and they received training in the spring. In the spring, there was some assistance of the teachers, there was an expectation that teachers would try out the new M-Class Assessment under the guidance of this M-Class Leadership Team. So it might be that a teacher might try a couple of students and get some feedback and so forth, or the reading, reading interventionist or teacher might, the leadership team teacher would administer the assessment, and the teachers would be able to observe. So that was in the spring, very late in the spring. We've continued to partner with the Hill, and so this year, our educators are gonna increase their use of the assessment within their own classroom. So in the, and then finally, building-based data and progress monitoring meetings across the year using our DIBELS data on the M-Class Platform. So we have, in the Title I schools, Atkinson, Thompson, and at the ABEC, we've partnered with the Hill for literacy. So they provided our PD a couple weeks ago during the district day, and teachers are working on taking a look at how they can support their students during the wind block time, which is the what I, what I need time, so there's no new instruction that goes on during that time. And in the other schools, Kristin is leading the way, and she's being the teacher, as she indicated at the beginning, and helping set that path similar to what we're doing in our schools, the Title I schools in ABEC. I had the opportunity actually this week to go into a lot of the wind blocks, and it was interesting to see a lot of the teachers already enacting a lot of the progress monitoring that they had set up during that PD. So that was really nice to see today, a lot of that in, in action, and their opportunity to really reach a lot of students in a short amount of time and do some really meaningful work with those students in, in a pretty limited time. So that was pretty impressive to see during the course of this week. And that's actually one of our wonderful reading, I don't have as many pictures on this slide, because we're typically not taking pictures of assessment, but this is one of our wonderful reading interventionists at Thompson, working with one of our students, taking the assessment.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, Chris, thanks for segueing and taking most of my goal. All right, well, I'll just keep on going. Just trying to segue. So as we get into Goal Three, you know, we even numbered these in a sequential way on purpose, you know, we started with the HQIM, this is our foundation, this is what we're doing tier one. And then Goal Two was about the assessment piece, and okay, how are we assessing how our HQIM is working? And now as we transition into Goal Three, it's really, okay, now what are we gonna do with that information that we've gathered from the assessment from Goal Two? So this is around the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, which you've heard, heard a few times already this evening, and equity, and it's just about creating and strengthening our systems that support all students at all tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three of instruction. And this really kind of solidifies what Kristin led off with, where all of our students are all of our students, and we're all working together, every aspect, every adult in the building is part of the same team to help address all of the needs of all of our learners, and that, like Kristin said, tiers are not locations, and it's about how do we support the students in the best environment that we possibly can, in the way that best meets their needs. Now, I was fortunate enough last year to be part of the district MTSS team that worked with the DESE in a number of districts across the Commonwealth, and we did a lot of great work. I will say that my favorite part was the pizza that Kristin brought on the MTSS meeting days, but we did a lot of incredible work there, but one of the things that we were most proud of was the schedule that came out of that, and we really focused on how much instructional time do we need for the content, and we had a lot of great discussions around that, and how are we going to structure that in a way that makes sense, but also prioritizing what Chris was talking about, our wind blocks. And wind stands for what I need. Now, across the district, we've had wind blocks in various forms over many years at this point, and it's really an opportunity for us to strategically target students with what they need, with what we've seen from data, what we've seen from our anecdotal notes throughout the course of the day and whatnot. But as we're moving forward, and as our Title I schools are working with the Hill, and our non-Title I schools are working with Kristin and the irreplaceable implementation specialist, nailed it, Jaclyn Taylor, we're really looking at how are we taking this data from Goal Two and reviewing it in a meaningful way to impact students at a direct and strategic level? So we're taking these wind blocks, and what we did, and just a few weeks ago, we had our first official, like, data meeting around this M-Class data, and each teacher in the district identified a group of students, three to five students, that they're gonna focus on over the next six weeks as we continue through the first kind of round of our data. We're gonna be doing bi-weekly progress monitoring, we're gonna be pulling off our tier one instructional information from our foundations, we're gonna be pulling lessons from the Amplify, which is where the system that our M-Class Assessment is from. We're gonna take all that information and use some targeted instruction, progress monitor, and then we're coming back together in December, and you can see the dates up there, but we're coming back in December to have discussions around, okay, this is where we started, this is how we progressed over the six weeks, and where are we going from here? So now, at that December meeting, we may look at and say, okay, we're gonna continue with these same students through February until our next official data meeting, where we have our new DIBELS data through the M-Class Assessment, and do the whole process over again, but we're not just going to handcuff ourselves to that. If we see that students have made progress and they're a benchmark, okay, great, let's pull somebody else in. Let's hit them for the next six weeks, because we wanna make sure that as we're all continuing to learn kind of through this new process, and really utilizing data in a meaningful and structured way, we wanna make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck. And as Kristin is building capacity within our team, we're building capacity with our, within our school-based teams, and we're looking forward as we can continue this and expand upon it over the course of the year. And you can see we have three benchmark data meetings, and that is structured around when our M-Class DIBELS Assessment is administered, and then we can take it from there. And the June meeting would really be around, okay, where did they start the year, where did they end the year, and what information can we pass on to next year's teacher to ensure that we start off on the right foot?
Thanks, Joe.
You're very welcome.
I hope Chris took all of your...
Didn't take all of it.
Joe, wait, set the table for it.
It was, it was nice.
Dr. Goddard has a, a unique goal for her school because of the age of her students, so she's gonna tell us about that next.
And hopefully I sound coherent, 'cause it's way past my bedtime right now. So at the ABECC, we'll continue, we're, we're also using Goal One and Three that the elementary schools were discussing, and then our, our additional goal for us, because of the age group of our students, is around play-based learning opportunities for students, helping to facilitate their curiosity and engagement. So we're going to also be utilizing that wind block within the building. Students will have opportunities for play-based learning within the wind block based on the data that we have, and the staff decided that they would really love to hear from families, and so they have created a home survey that they'd like to send out to families around their child's enthusiasm for school and learning, and they'd like to send that out the beginning of the year and the end of the year to hopefully see an increase in students' engagement and excitement based on the increase of play-based learning within the building. And then some of our outcomes, we're hoping to see, is that students will meet the grade level benchmark for DIBELS foundations and our MAP testing, and that we'll have fewer school refusals, which in the early grades, we don't have as many, I would imagine, as the high school has, but we do occasionally have students who, who are not as excited to come to school, and so by increase, increasing the opportunity for play-based learning, they will be more excited to come to school, which will also hopefully make the parents see a change at home as well. Thank you.
Don't I have the most amazing team? I'm so lucky. I'm so lucky. And so, questions?
Before we go to questions, I do wanna point out that you have that presentation, but you also have the individual district improvement plan, so those were the highlights for you, but you have each school's individual improvement plan. And I'm also just gonna take a minute to recognize Nicole Rudowski, who's our assistant principal at the Thompson and Franklin School this year. So we were able to use some of our title funds to bring another administrator on board and support this great work, and she's here tonight, so I just wanna make sure, I said hello to her.
I feel like they want you to join us at the table.
She was invited.
Yes, she's here as, as an observer, her new role.
Can I, do I get to start? Okay. Thank you so, so very much. I've worked with Kristin and other Kristin before, and I know they're both phenomenal leaders, so thank you for, for being there to, to guide our, our principals, and thank you to all of you for, the work that they're doing is, can be challenging at times, 'cause it makes us, I know, 'cause I worked with other Kristin as well, it makes you really, it challenges you to think about, like, what you've been doing for a long time, and sometimes you have to recognize that might, now you have to do differently, and that can be hard. So thank you for leaning into it and embracing that, and on behalf of our kids, that means so much that you continue to, to do that for our kiddos, and I really, really appreciate it. I know that they, they challenge you in all the right ways, and it can be like a hard thing to do. I have two quick questions. One about Eureka Math Squared, you said 20 classrooms, are those across all grade levels in all schools, or some grade, like, how are we, are all the buildings getting some of it?
I think we have pretty even distribution of, yes, the pilot team, and so all the way from K to four, I'm not sure we have a fifth grade pilot team. No, we do, we do, exactly, yep. Oh, exactly. So yes, we, so they're not necessarily completely evenly spaced, but they're...
We have all the grades represented and all the schools represent. Thank you. And they're working with, are they working with Ben to do all that work in the rollout? And is there an FCI as well?
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So there's two FCIs at each of our elementary schools, and so they are doing the collaborative work with ELA in math.
And when do they do that?
So they meet with our team, director team, once a month, where we prepare them to give professional development during the days when students go home early. And so that generally, those FCIs are, are deliverers of a lot of our professional development during that time.
Again, just wanna make sure that we understand, like, why those Wednesdays are so important for our kids, and like, the work that goes into and how valuable it is for our parents. I knew, I knew the answer, but I want to make sure other people hear it. I'm curious mostly about the wind block, and this, I guess it's a different question for the two, yours question's a little different, but I think you can, similar. Are you teaming, like, the first-grade teachers together and then using the entire team to address the first-grade needs and going between classrooms? Are you just having teachers work within their own classroom? Are you teaming, I guess, the, like, groups of kindergarten teachers together to, like, if you have three kids here, and three kids here, have the same thing, are they going to work with one person while the other one does that? Is like, are we using, like, are we being flexible in those types of schedules, or having that schedule exist so that we can really spread out our, our knowledge wealth in a good and purposeful way?
I think we're starting, and so we're starting with students within their own classroom, but very organically, like, a lot of times during our teacher data meetings, they've been like, oh, your students need the same things as my students, and we're able to make some moves across classes. I don't think we are doing that consistently across schools and across grade levels. Did anyone wanna add?
Yeah, we, we did, organically is the word. I have a second-grade team that one of the teachers came to me, and I thought it was some type of an out-of-the-box request...
so important for our kids and like the work that goes into and how valuable it is for our parents. I knew, I knew the answer, but I want to make sure other people hear it. I'm curious mostly about the win block and this, I guess it's a different question for the two, yours question's a little different, but I think you can, similar. Are you teaming like the first grade teachers together and then using the entire team to address the first grade needs and going between classrooms? Are you just having teachers work within their own classroom? Are you teaming, I guess, the like groups of kindergarten teachers together to like, if you have three kids here, three kids here of the same thing, are they going to work with one person while the other one does that? Is like, are we using like, are we being flexible in those types of schedules or having that schedule exist so that we can really spread out our knowledge wealth in a good and purposeful way?
I think we're starting and so we're starting with students within their own classroom, but very organically, like a lot of times during our teacher data meetings, they've been like, oh, your students need the same things as my students and we're able to make some moves across classes. I don't think we are doing that consistently across schools and across grade levels. Did anyone want to add?
Yeah, we did, organically is the word. I have a second grade team that one of the teachers came to me and I thought it was some type of an out of the box request that I wouldn't approve of and I could hear Kristen Ando in my head going, hell yeah, that's a great idea. And she asked if she could pull two students for her win block for the goal, for what Joe referred to the SMART goal. So she's taking, because one classroom had a higher need, say for fluency, so she's pulling three kids for fluency because her classroom, the dynamics of the student profile were different. And so I said, you guys, we're going to earn points with Ando because this is the goal of where we're all pushing to. And as a high school teacher, I said to you about two years ago, why can't we move kids around in the building even though it's first graders to a first grade classroom? And she said, in Lawrence, that's what we did, remember?
You can do that, why not?
And so I'm excited about it because, you know, I just see the kids excited, so.
Are, when you have, are your, all your first grade win blocks at the same time and all your third grade win blocks at the same time? So they're like, as you go more into this, there is that possibility?
Oh, not at the same time, I beg your pardon.
It varies school to school.
I wonder then if that could be something later to explore, like how we can then build in those opportunities so you do have, when you want, you have the opportunity to help each other out.
I just want to add, I think one of the reasons too, and I think maybe Mr. Clark is going to say about the schedule and the people, go ahead, Mr. Clark.
It's all the specials too.
No, actually, we strategically looked at offering schools an option between a staggered schedule or the standard schedule where all first grades have the same schedule or two for, for example, at Franklin, because I have four, two first grades are on this schedule and two first grades are on this schedule. And we, this was kind, this came out of the MTSS team and we were looking at it in a strategic way in order how to best meet the needs of our students on IEPs. And by having two win blocks and two opportunities for special educators to pull students, they have smaller groups, more opportunities to meet with them, so that was part of the thing behind the staggered schedule.
Thank you. And then my last one is...
Joe, can I just jump on that one because it's the same topic? So are you saying, just so I understand, so you're saying that in your four grades, two are the same and the other two are the same?
Yes.
The two pairs?
So for example, one A and one B are on the same schedule and one C and one D are on the same schedule but different from one A and one B.
From one A and one B, okay, but at least they're in pairs.
Yes.
And then you mentioned and talked a lot about how you can use the data from M-class and all the other things to really focus in on your Tier Two adjustments and your Tier Two instructions. Are we using that as well for our Tier One instruction?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes, thank you.
I assumed the question, the answer was yes, I just wanted to confirm.
I think we're learning to call it like supported Tier One instruction, so the teacher would work with the students like during the whole ELA block and then make, work with the same students or different students during the win block, but absolutely, thanks.
Thank you.
I have a number, just because I'm not a professional educator at this level, some of these terms don't, I don't know what they are. So I'm curious what a school refusal is, I didn't think that was an option. They just say, I'm not going?
Or kicking and screaming as their parent walks them in, drops them the door and runs.
But that's what you mean by, okay, so it's not really, well, it sort of is a refusal, okay.
And you'd be surprised sometimes if your parents go home and say, I can't get my five-year-old to school.
Yeah, no, it's a little different if they're a high school student. Okay, you said that you used goals, ones and one and three also, I'm just curious, oh, because the two is the assessments, that's why, okay.
Yeah, and it's embedded in twelve.
All right, that makes sense. The next one, I'm curious about, Joe, when you were talking about the monitoring, is it, are you doing like sampling or are you monitoring everybody?
So...
It sounded like sampling, at least at one point.
It is, so we're doing sampling essentially with those three to five students that each teacher has identified. It's almost kind of like a case study as we're piloting or, I hate that word piloting, but as we're working through this year, as we're learning and we're going to progress monitor. So through the M-class platform, there is an option to progress monitor, so it's a similar type of assessment, but it allows us to track it more frequently than just the benchmark times.
Okay, so you sort of, so you sort of look at everybody at the benchmarks and then you look at this small samples more often?
Exactly, yes.
Oh, I like that, okay.
And Dave, we had today, a shout out to Jackie Taylor and she's done it at all our schools. She was at my school today, I had 14 teachers rotate through why Jackie modeled the, what the win block should look like, like the biggest bang for your buck of making sure you're utilizing the time well with the curriculum. And so we had first grade, all four teachers went in and watched the lesson all the way up through fifth grade and she's done it at all our schools, so we're all in alignment for the win block.
Okay. And then tagging on top of that, somewhere, I can't remember where my note went, but how we're sharing the results across the whole district, can maybe elaborate on that?
That would be Dr. Ando's question, probably.
I love how you just upgraded me. Yes, so the M-class, so the DIBELS is the assessment and we put it in the M-class platform. So from the M-class platform, you can pull all sorts of different reports, you can, so as an administrator, I could see the entire district, as a principal, you could see the whole school, as a teacher, you can see your whole class. And so the platform, the M-class isn't the assessment, it's just the platform that manipulates the data that we can pull and see.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think that some of the other ones were already answered. I think there's one more. Oh, I'm particularly curious about the, well, actually a couple more, I lied, sorry. Difference between Eureka and Eureka Squared, what's, what's going on there?
Oh gosh, I play a humanities director on TV, can you answer that one?
What I can tell you, because I was on the math curriculum committee with Tiffany and several teachers, so it essentially takes everything that we like or actually that we maybe don't like about Eureka and makes it, made it better. So it's sort of the next generation of what we're doing already with Eureka. So we had the opportunity to go see it in action in the Andover Public Schools. And a lot, it's a lot of, we liked a lot of the things that it offered for our kids, so a lot of the feedback that we had about our current program over time, they've sort of taken that feedback over time as a company and they've just sort of improved on it.
Oh, okay.
And so we, we felt like that would be a good learning experience for our kids.
So, so it's, it's, we're, we're giving input to the platform and they're modifying it for us or are we modifying it for ourselves?
So one of the things we learned in talking with the people at the company is they, as any curriculum company, would they take feedback over time from people and then they take a look at that and so when they revise curriculum or have changed it, they incorporate some of the feedback from their districts or stakeholders over time. And so it appears Eureka has done that, so, and that's what we're looking at now and piloting it in the classrooms. But it looked, it looked good to us when we, when we had our visits and so forth, there were a lot of things that maybe we didn't like so much about the Eureka that we're like, hmm, this is a little bit better, so.
Okay, so it's like 2.0?
Exactly.
To use that kind of terminology?
Eureka 2.0.
It's exponentially better.
Oh, okay.
2.0 is another way to look at it.
I do understand, I do understand, he's talking my language now, okay. All right.
She doesn't think it's funny.
I'm going to call him, that was a George Gonsalves-level joke right there.
That was a dad joke, yes.
All right. One more question, one more if I may. The, the FCIs, are they, they're NAPS staff, right, people? Okay. And what, what's their qualifications to become an FCI?
Oh, good question. So they, it is, is a position that we have in the contract, it's a stipulated position, so being a teacher leader. And so those teacher leaders are pretty co-selected by the principals and myself as far as people who are most embedded in their teaching practices and able to deliver professional development to others. That seems, the second part is the most, is the most essential because they sort of do the learning out front with me and the principals and then they have to deliver it, the same professional development to their peers. And so they range from veteran teachers to teachers who are in their first few years. I don't think we have any brand new, but...
So they're folks that you guys have picked out as, as good, having that kind of capability and be good for that? Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
So I'm trying to understand, I understand about progress monitoring and I think it's great that, that you're moving in that direction. And so you identify the students who fall behind, probably more than three to five in a classroom of 20. And now, and, and the MTSS means how are we going to, if I understand it right, how are we going to meet these needs, how are we going to figure out what we do? And I'm just trying to get the timing, the win block is how long?
Forty-five minutes.
So is that enough time to meet all these individual needs or does this happen during, throughout the math or the reading block?
Well, we're, I mean, we're addressing all of their needs throughout the course of the day, so that's, that's primary, but we use the win block to prioritize the targeted instruction. So now, for example, like Karen was just talking about when Jackie Taylor came through all of our buildings, each of those lessons should be about, especially for the younger kids, 10, 15 minutes max. So you could in theory get three of those in and we're looking at three of those per week, per group. So as we're getting the ball rolling, we're really focusing on that first group of three to five students and of course, there are likely more than three to five students that are below the benchmark at that point, at that point of the year, especially at the beginning of year. But as we move forward and as we are building our own capacity and we can further build the capacity of our teachers, because even when we were meeting with Jackie, when she was, she was at Franklin, I think on Tuesday, and each time, it's interesting, like the volleying that she does back and forth, like covering the letter, sound, vowel, phrase, and it's not, I don't want to say it's not natural, but it's not the way in which teachers are comfortable. And we were talking about how to become comfortable with being uncomfortable and as we move forward and as we learn more about that, we absolutely are going to expand that. But we're using this first kind of section to take these three to five students, progress monitor with the DIBELS through the M-class platform and then have these checkpoints every six weeks to see how we're doing and reassess and move from there.
I guess the question is, during the rest of the time, how do you deal with the fact that not all students are at the same level?
Teachers are scaffolding and differentiating throughout every lesson. You have different learners across the board in every single classroom. So whether it's additional visuals, whether it's having a teacher's assistant, you're sitting with that teacher, I mean, that student breaking it down further, whether it's giving them manipulatives and hands-on materials, but I mean, that's, that's what teachers do, is they're scaffolding for every single lesson.
And we've used these win blocks for years at this point too, so we're using this kind of methodology for this small group of students, but we're not abandoning all of the other great teaching practices that we've done during this win block and pulling other groups for, oh, this group needs help with number sense, right? So they're pulling small groups for that piece. This what I need block isn't exclusive to ELA, but what we're talking about specifically tonight with this goal is centered around the DIBELS and the early literacy skills.
But is the rest of the time in whole group or partly in whole group and partly in small group?
Specifically the win block?
No, the rest of the time.
The rest of the day? It varies, it depends. So if we looked at a Witten Wisdom block, there is whole group instruction where they're noticing and wondering, where they're reading stories, then there's partner work, small group work, it varies throughout the day.
And I think that's one of the things we liked about Eureka Squared, the new math curriculum that we're piloting, is that we saw more opportunities for students to work with partners, work in small groups, have discussions around math and, and that, whereas the current Eureka version is a lot of teacher talking at the students and not as much opportunity as for those discussions and so I think Eureka Squared is moving in that, that direction, which is exciting.
I'm also, you, you need others, you have other teachers coming in to help at some point, right?
Of course, yes, special educators, reading specialists.
Is that only during the win block or also throughout the...
Throughout the day, yes.
And, and how does this work? Like, what, what's going on with all the other students?
So the others, so during the win block and I guess maybe I should have explained this more, when we have the win block and I was talking about how we have it set up in a way specifically to help best meet the needs of our students on IEPs, that is the time of day when students are pulled for their C grid minutes so that they're not missing any new instruction. So now the classes has fewer students in it, they're meeting with small groups throughout the time, that's time they might be utilizing boost, they might be utilizing the math one, ST math, thank you, and various things throughout the day. They might have book buddies, like to reading a G-ode that goes along with the Witten Wisdom topic. So it's a lot of guided instruction and then the targeted instruction at the teacher table for those 10 to 15-minute solid mini-list.
So is there a teacher table not during the win block?
Yeah, so, so, yeah. So for example, during, during a typical math block, the whole group lesson may happen and then what happens is they go into a workshop model and the teacher has a teacher table where they're meeting the needs and they rotate through different activities, whether math games on the rug, maybe ST math and then teacher table where they address the group, the students in a smaller group.
And could a specialist come in to help some of the kids who are not?
Absolutely, yes, yeah.
Has that been going on for a long time? Do teachers like that?
Yes, yeah.
Is that new or is that...
It's, no, it's not new, no. Our special educators, our reading interventionists, our ESL teachers, they, they're all in and out of the classroom helping throughout the building.
Oh, I guess I didn't mean that, I meant the part where, where the teacher's at a teacher table and then kids are working with each other.
That's not new, I just want to...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's not new.
Clarify a couple of things, I think these questions are great about the educational day of the students, but I, I just want to remind us that we are talking about the school improvement plan that are very specific targeted goals about some things. So I just, sometimes I want these presentations to be for our community as well, so just understanding that a lot of what we're talking about is sort of just general education, the school day, but these three goals are just three targeted goals that, that each of our schools are doing towards their school improvement plan. I don't want anyone to think that we're not doing those other things, but these were three specific goals that will be ourselves, progress monitoring, keeping data on and seeing if we achieve these goals.
And all of that's going out Friday in the letters that we're offering to parents to be able to say what we're doing in place, the early literacy screening letters so that parents are understanding, to your point, at what else is going on during the day and what, how is my child being supported with the goals that we have in mind too. So it is the win block, but it is small group instruction in the classroom and the children are receiving that, what they need reflected on what the parents are getting back for this early screening.
I think, so a couple of quick, quick questions. First, thank you very much for coming, truly appreciate hearing all of this and I kind of had to laugh a little bit about the refusal to come to school. I've been fortunate enough to have my daughter with Dr. Gardard and with Principal Clark. My daughter continues to want to be the first one dropped off and the last one picked up, right? So amazing things are happening, so thank you.
Whip that bike down the drive.
Exactly, right? So my question is, so it has one of the, the district goals, district goal number three about budget inequity, just kind of on the last part of that, develop efficient systems to ensure that we move towards operating within, within the allocated budget. Is there one of the goals within the school improvement plans that keys off to make sure that we're operating within the allocated budget?
I think that, so absolutely, I think, I think it's sort of, that's our central office goal or our, at our level, our goal. And then we generally communicate to principals about, you know, what their budget is or isn't and so it didn't make sense for them to necessarily put that into their own goals. But of course, like budget is always, they're all nodding, a topic of our discussion, a topic of what we're trying to...
It may not be in their school improvement plan, but it's certainly something they could put in their principal goal, just like educators have student practice or, you know, they have SMART goals, all of our principals have goals as well.
Okay, so not appropriate here, but in other areas. All right, awesome, thank you very much, thank you.
And I just had one comment, one question, actually. What kind of feedback are you getting from the teachers about being able to pull this data, interpreting it, is there any struggles with that or are they feeling a little bit more comfortable with it or is it just putting it into practice that they're starting to get to that comfortable level? What kind of feedback are you, are you getting from them?
So I would, our, at the ABECC, we've been having these types of data meetings for a couple of years, but just with, using a different platform. So I think for the team in my building, it's just getting used to the new platform has been a little bit overwhelming just because it looks different, but I think once we can work through that, we're good to go.
I think it also speaks to the, I know it does, I don't think, I know it speaks to the rollout of the high-quality curriculum material related to Witten Wisdom and the level and thought that was done and how we were rolling it out, namely with Kristen Ando, with Jackie and some other supportive coaches that we've had, that the teachers, it built trust so that the teachers knew, I'm doing something different, but I'm tremendously supportive and it actually happened during COVID, of all things where teachers weren't left alone of here's your new material, make sure you learn it. So there's a level of that trust remaining very strong, so when they say, now we're going to try something new, but just like today, that Jackie Taylor was in the building and had all of my teachers rotate through and she was modeling for them and she's hand holding for some that are newer and nervous, so I would say overall, the buy-in is good, it's just... just still learning some new things, you know?
Can I ask a follow-up question about data meetings? I'd be curious of your thoughts about how the data meetings affect how teachers teach and how they relate to each other.
I think the individual data meetings are helpful for them to start to understand what their, their students need within their classroom, where I see sort of an even stronger next step from that is our collaboration meetings, where they can talk about students together, talk about, like, what, what are you working on with these students, and everyone's bringing ideas and suggestions to help each other. So I think it's, those two things working together are really powerful.
And one of the things we're talking, we've been talking about, bringing back that we had before COVID, the vertical collaboration. So where we're bringing in, a collaboration meeting happens once a week for each grade level team, but we're bringing back the vertical collaboration, so I hope to have my 1A teacher with 2B, with, I beg your pardon, 2A, 3A, 4A, 5A, so they're looking at the child overall of what we're doing to try to connect with the data.
Thank you all so much, your passion really shows through, I think the school improvement plan is just incredible.
Is this where we put a motion to delay school?
No, sorry. Yeah, this looks wonderful.
My wife's asked if I was kidnapped by aliens.
We're, we're very fortunate to have each and every one of you, and we really do appreciate all of the work that you all do, it's amazing work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm so late.
All right, and we will vote on these as a second read next meeting.
I'm gonna sweep the entire meeting.
What's next?
If I don't make it through the entire meeting, I can't say I've made it through the entire meeting.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
You're doing it, Ellie?
Doing it, all right.
I'm doing so much stuff.
Another shark, what do you got?
Yeah, another shark and then a pumpkin, I'm making that pumpkin and sorbet right now.
What about a pumpkin shark?
So where, with the pumpkin, where's the light coming from?
Um, that's-
Have you started doing, you like shadows?
Okay, so-
That's kind of fun, you know, you get three dimensional.
I have to start doing shadows, but I wanna draw the hammer and the shark today.
Oh, that's very nice. Yes.
Thank you. I drew like eight sharks.
I kind of like pencil drawing, and I have read various books on how you do pencil drawing, and you start, you start with the shapes, and then you imagine where the light's from. And then there's two kinds of shadows, there's the shadow of light, the light, and then there's the cat shadow.
I think shadows are interesting.
We don't have, we do have a form.
All right, so let's go ahead and, do you want to give us a quick building update on the middle school?
Sure.
Okay.
The middle school project is still happening, we're moving towards our January completion day.
We're very excited, just some things that happened leading up to last Friday, continuing watering of the plants and landscape to make sure they look good, and they've loomed and seed uneven areas around utility holes to make sure the drainage is working, they demoed existing locker pieces in the carrier wing, that's the eighth grade area is the carrier wing? Yeah, they're one in the front of the building, that's the part that's being worked on right now. On the roof, we're doing some repairs, putting a new roof membrane, and there'll eventually be some new drains on the roof to make sure it all drains properly. Serapro's still working on fixing everything from our little sprinkler incident, they're working on the HVAC and installing the new boiler, they wired the boilers for the HVAC system, yeah, they, they're doing really good. That's all I got right now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, of particular importance, given last spring, sorry, they have the new pH neutralizer tanks set up, and it's, it's happened properly.
Sounds good. All right, we're gonna go on to continued business, we have our proposed renovations at NAMs-
Are we voting?
And NHS, we are going to be voting on this. Again, as we had mentioned, this does not affect our budget, this is coming out of the revolving account for food services, they have that money in that account to be able to do the renovations to the middle school cafeteria and the high school cafeteria, they did that presentation last week.
Madam Chair, we're, it's this one, we're voting on a transfer so that they can-
We are voting on the transfer only, that is our vote.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to transfer 575,000 to be moved from the revolving account into budget line equipment, 205,0203001.2.340019, etc.
You were just doing that to make it harder on Michelle when she does the notes.
So that increases it from 150 to 725 for the renovation projects.
All right, we have a second, is there any discussion?
No, I have a second.
Oh, Kelly beat you to it, sorry. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Moskovich?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we have the second read on the Special Education Advisory Committee Guidelines and Appointments. We did have some proposed edits to that, which are in redlined format. We are going quite a bit over time, so if it is all right with the committee, I'd like to defer this second read to the next meeting. And then we can go over these, you can go over these edits individually.
Do you need a motion, or should we just nod and smile?
If there's no objection, I don't think we need a motion. Is, no objection?
No objection.
Okay, so we will defer that second read to our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, for new business-
I'm sorry, just a quick question.
Yes.
This, I'm, I'm trying to find what you referred to.
Oh.
It's after a lot of-
The Advisory Committee on Special Education Guidelines.
No, yeah, okay. It wasn't emailed to us, so it's in here, okay.
It's in the packet.
I'll keep looking, go ahead, sorry.
All right.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I had to step out for a second, so are we skipping some of this earlier stuff?
We did, we just had skipped the Kittredge Elementary School update, did you have any quick updates you wanted to add to that?
I think, just very briefly, that it, it, things are proceeding as scheduled, the most important thing to mention is the December 4th community meeting, I can give more details next, next time, because it is so late, but things are proceeding, people should put that on their calendar, if they, you know, that's their opportunity to weigh in.
Do they have a location for it at least?
I don't believe they've selected a location yet.
We'll get that, okay, but December 4th should be on the calendar.
How is that getting published? Like, how do people know about that? Is it, is it going to the Kittredge Community?
It's going to Kittredge Community, it'll be on the school, it'll be on the town's website, it'll be on the school's website, we'll get, because we want communities input as well, there'll be some opportunities for-
Right, and I guess one other quick thing I could say is that there, the, the small group meetings are, are ongoing with various, various stakeholders, right? Like teachers, the, you know, administration, assistants, parent groups, etc.
All right, we have our first read of the superintendent's goals.
So I'll just be, you know, transparent and honest, I just started main goals, these are not fully developed, I wanted to see if this is the sort of direction of the committee, trying to follow suit with some matching towards our district improvement plan through our school leadership, so really focusing on the leadership team, so one of, you know, I believe one of my, one of my goals should be really rebuilding our leadership team at both the district and the school level, really supporting our leaders, really with the effort, with the objective of supporting all of our students, particularly those who've been historically marginalized, focusing on collaborative leadership, accountability, commitment to equity across all aspects of the district. This, I could, would flesh this out, but I just wanted to sort of present these in a sort of more basic way tonight. Goal two, looking at instructional improvement, which is very much what you heard about tonight in terms of instruction and equity, high-quality instructional materials, continuing to foster the MTS system and equity. Goal three would focus on the budget systems, so really implementing strategic decisions and developing efficient systems to ensure we operate within the allocated budget. And then there is a recommendation, in the past, there's always been a superintendent and school committee goal together, so looking at budgeting and equity again, but thinking that the school superintendent and the North Andover School Committee will develop and enhance efficient budget protocols to ensure the systems operate within the allocated budget in a reasonable timeframe.
Looking these over, I think these are right in line, if, if my committee members would agree, of what we would like to see as the goals, as they continue to develop with benchmarks. If anybody wants to add to that.
First, I mean, it's a really great first draft, on target.
It's just a bargain, it's just baseline.
I'm wondering if the timeline, Mrs. Latha, could be that the next meeting you develop the more specific steps to take, and then we can do a vote.
Following up that, perfect.
Does that seem like a reasonable timeline for you?
Yep. And if you want to read these, I know we're sort of moving along fast, but if any members want to read it, if there's something you want to specifically send to me, I'm happy to, if there's, after you read these goals, if there's anything you want to specifically send to me, and, and asking for some, either clarification or expansion, I'm happy to take that information.
Thank you.
Perfect, I was just gonna ask that. Read my mind.
Can I ask about how, at some point, these need to be, and I agree with Joe, this looks like a very good first start, there needs to be some understanding about data, right?
Correct.
At some point, there's a discussion about what data you eventually submit to-
Right, and I think that's gonna be what Joe was saying, the next step, when she submits the next meeting, it's gonna have the benchmark goals, how she's going to demonstrate that these are being met throughout the year.
Okay.
I just didn't do it tonight if it wasn't on the right path.
Next item, as I was reviewing the policies for school improvement plans, it came to my attention that some of the recommended policies with MASC have been updated, and they weren't exactly in line with ours. So it is my proposal that we update those, specifically, BDF A was removed, BDF AE1, BDF E, there should be a BDF AE2, it's, oh, on the backside. BDF AE3 were all removed and replaced with a new BDF A and BDF AE. That was a mouthful. So the ones that are being removed were essentially incorporated and updated into BDF A and BDF AE. So they essentially were consolidated, so if you would like to take a look at what was removed versus what was changed into school councils and the school improvement plan as far as the policies.
I think I missed a step, are you saying that they changed their recommendation?
They changed their recommendation.
So the, they have been changed is the sort of our, our parent or whatever, our friend's-
Yes.
-model?
Yes.
And you're anticipating a discussion about whether we incorporated these changes?
Correct. Yes, exactly.
That's great.
So they have changed their recommendations by, and they're, they are recommending removing these four and replacing with those two.
So when I study this, the one that has nothing after it is the, the old, and the one with Es and threes and stuff like that-
The ones that are removed are the old.
The ones that have removed are the old, the ones with no writing-
Are the new.
With no watermark across them are the new.
Oh, so yeah, my system wouldn't work as the one that says, all right, I get it. Okay, thank you.
So, yes.
So I have a question, Madam Chair, is the intention to discuss and vote next time, or should we also discuss, ask questions, maybe make necessary revisions and vote the time af-
I believe the best thing would be to discuss, make revisions, add anything we may make, or to make any changes we need to make, and then vote the time after.
Thank you.
So there'll be two more visits to this?
Two more, yes.
We'll, we'll have to survive with the bad old stuff for next week or two weeks.
And just for warning, we will have more to come. We are going to be reviewing several other policies.
So we're updated, right?
They, yes, we're gonna be updating more, so we're just taking them-
Oh, that's very smart.
Piece by piece here.
Excellent.
Okay.
Good.
All right. All right, any other public comment? None.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, second.